Let me just let him sit down and we'll start.
These things over my.
That's good. Okay, friends. All right, I'd like to call this Celine City Council Work Meeting to Order at 6:34 PM. Members present, five, excuse me, thank you. 5:34 PM, members present are Councilmembers Kamara Sulek, CEO Del Orco, Dylan, Mayor Potem Girba, Mayor Marl, and we also have Councilmember Elect Rice in the audience. And because this is a work meeting, Nicole, I will provide you the opportunity unless there are objections from the dearest to ask questions at the conclusion of the presentation. From city staff, we have City Manager O'Toole, City Clerk Royal, Assistant City Manager Getzmann is in the back, City Treasurer Cole is here, along with DPW Director Searls, and PD Budget Analyst Terry. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
So moved?
As submitted?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dylan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Kamara Sulek. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Yeah, I guess we'll do a motion. Is there a motion to excuse the absence of Councilmember Kraus?
So moved.
Moved by Kamara Sulek, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Del Orco. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it. And was that, who were the nays on that? Show of hands. So three nays and three yays, so the motion does not pass. We move on to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comments or questions to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? Please, you will have three minutes.
Thank you.
We welcome you here this evening.
Yes, I won't need three minutes. I just wanted to come this evening and introduce myself. My name is Mary Detling. I'm the new Executive Director for Celine Main Street. And really quickly, I just wanted to let you know who I am, and thank you for all you've done for Celine in the past, and we look forward to working with you in the future to do the best we can for Celine.
Very good. Hope you'll stick around for the meeting, and there might be some questions that come up that are best addressed by you.
Okay, I'll stick around.
Very good. Thank you so much, Mary. Appreciate it. Any additional citizen comments? And I'm assuming we received none in writing in advance of tonight's meeting. Okay? Then we proceed to discussion, which is operational and cost efficiencies. As has been noted in the past, and was noted, I believe, two weeks ago as part of the audit presentation, our unassigned fund balance dipped below what is articulated in our fund balance policy, which stipulates that as an organization, we should maintain a fund balance of between 15% and 20%. If it's over 20%, then it outlines certain avenues, excuse me, in which those dollars can be directed, specifically legacy costs, retiree, healthcare and pension, along with critical infrastructure needs. Conversely, when the fund balance dips below the 15%, it does require a corrective action plan to resolve that deficiency. And it is our assumption that without some significant changes, we will be experiencing a fund balance below 15% in the subsequent fiscal year as well. So we have some decisions to make. I suspect we will not be able to reach consensus tonight, but this will be an ongoing discussion between the City Manager and Treasurer. They have a presentation. We obviously have ample time this evening, so feel free to go through the presentation at your leisure, then we will open it up for questions. I will begin to my right this evening with Kamara Sulek and end to my left with Del Orco, but then jump to Councilmember Elect Rice in the event that she has any questions. Unless there's anything for me, I'll start off with you, City Manager O'Toole, and then you are welcome to defer at any time to City Treasurer Cole.
Thank you, Mayor Marl. We will sort of be tag teaming the presentation tonight, so I'll open with the genesis for creating this report, as you referenced, is in response to the city's existing fund balance policy for FY '22. Our fund balance did dip below that 15%. Oh, next slide. Thank you. So this is the language from that policy, which stipulates that a plan must be adopted by the City Council to restore the balance within that desired level within a specific time period. So the methodology that Treasurer Cole and I deployed in creating this review is to consider how we can most quickly ensure that that fund balance is brought above 15% and more importantly maintains a position above 15% moving forward, which will require some operational changes be made. We're not looking for direction or consensus tonight, just input from Council on which of these ideas you believe has further merit, and you would like staff to dedicate time and resources to more thoroughly investigating. Next slide.
So this is our general fund. This is its working. Your mic is not on.
I think those mics have to push the button. Make sure the green light is illuminated. You might want to pull it a bit closer to your face, Treasurer Cole. Sorry for speaking with my mouth full.
No, no, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's a little bit more difficult with the mask on. And the next couple of slides we're going to go through are just kind of recap of where we're at, you know, where our money comes from, where our money goes, very quickly, just so we have that kind of in the background as we discuss these financial matters. So if you look at our general fund, our largest source of revenue comes from our property taxes, and you can see that kind of the other breakdowns, I won't go through the entire percentages, but just a reminder that we have, you know, our property taxes are definitely the largest source. Other big sources are charges for services, some state sources, non-residential property taxes, capital grants and contributions, and other. So, and then when you look down into our other category, you know, metroact money, some of the ARPA funds, sales tax, PPT reimbursement, and our recreation programs. Next slide. Then if you look at our breakdown of our expenses, you can see here, and I forget, please forgive me, my screen is not working, so if you look at, this kind of lays out the next. Oh, yeah. So if you look at our general government, some of the projects that we've been doing, Rosebud, Pleasant Ridge, Stormwater, Salt Springs Park, Mineral and Macon Street, the sidewalk there, all of those were kind of big expenses that we had this year. Public safety, we have bought two police cars this year. As a reminder, we did not purchase one in 2021, so we have the two this year, and the body cameras. The body cameras are something that we are paying for over five years, and so that's kind of been nice that we can kind of allocate that cash on a yearly basis. And then our contribution to the Celine Area Fire Department, just below $487,000, or $500,000, so, and then our public works. So those are kind of our biggest expenses. Next slide.
And one thing I'll add on that last slide is, while some of those expenses are truly one-time anomalies, I do think things like storm sewer investment are more an issue moving forward, so while we may not have the expense of a rosebud in the future, we certainly need to be looking at investing more dollars in that infrastructure. So how we approach dividing up these recommendations is looking at either items that are revenue generating, cost-saving, or operational efficiencies. And we view the operational efficiencies as ways of improving manpower and dedicating our skilled labor more to those tasks that tend to have a higher price tag to them, like storm water infrastructure management.
Next slide. So I do have some good news about our taxable value and its growth. So right now, I use our total taxable value and estimated what the increase of our tax revenue will be this year, and it looks like our percentage of that increase will be just under $200,000. This is a very conservative estimate for revenue increase, as CPI has not been applied to our taxable value yet, which likely will be the 5% this year. Next slide.
Jiminy. One other revenue generating opportunity that has arisen is simply the existence of new retail marijuana dispensaries. The city has taken a fairly conservative look at what it would mean to have 10 applications and no new businesses opening in FY '23. The state does pay its revenue sharing portion on a calendar year basis, not on our fiscal year basis, so nothing is expected to be opened by the end of this calendar year. That's why we made that assumption. But moving into FY '24, or calendar year '24 for the state's purposes, we estimate that there'll be at least three retail locations from which the city will generate additional revenue share, and we use the revenue sharing estimates based on this past year's revenue sharing.
Yes, next slide. I would like to draw your attention to, we kind of, at each kind of idea or alternative, we've kind of put down, like if it needs action, or something that's already occurring within the city. So one idea that we had for a way to increase our revenue was the possibility of installing parking meters. Now, the City of Howell recently did this, so I kind of borrowed some of their figures and numbers and applied them to the City of Celine, and it looks like about a $65,000 revenue generator annually would be what we would be looking at if we charged a very nominal fee for parking $2 an hour, excuse me, $2 for four hours. So paying for parking downtown can be a contentious topic of conversation. Some people love it because it keeps traffic moving downtown. Other people, you know, feel like we have this small-town feel, and we maybe don't need kind of that quaint, or the parking meters and such a quaint feeling downtown.
And again, on this issue, I think there's more that could be done to identify what exactly parameters we would want to put in place if we did move forward. Certainly, there are precedents for communities that still allow a portion of time to be free, but really, the goal is increasing turnover, especially on spots nearest to retail and restaurant locations.
Next slide. So this is where we get to look at the Celine Area Fire Department. Here, you'll be able to see the amounts that we budgeted, and if we are currently levying .87 mil, which is about $350,000 revenue generating, if we were to levy the full mil, that would bring in the $455,000 approximately, so that could be part of a revenue increase that we could look at for fiscal year '24 of about $99,000.
And at a full mil, the total expenditures out of the general fund does bring that expense a lot closer to what we were spending on a general fund in FY '20 and '21. As you know, the rates were increased by approximately 30% for FY '22, and it's been a bit of a scramble to fill that gap.
Next slide. Another option we have for some cost savings is the outsourcing of dispatch. Celine is one of only two communities in Wasna County who do not use the county's dispatch services, and currently, if we look at the approximate estimated cost according to our budget of what our dispatch services cost, that with the estimate of about $100,000, it's $108,000. You can see that the potential cost savings there for fiscal year '24 would be a bit less because they couldn't install until the beginning of fiscal year '24. Is that correct?
The beginning of calendar year '24. So tentatively, the county has indicated the earliest that they could consider rolling us into their dispatch services would be Q1 2024, so in FY '24, we only estimate a 50% impact.
So then in fiscal year '25, we could kind of recognize the entire savings of the $348,000 approximately. Next slide. People's Express, this is a service that the city pays for in order for folks without the ability to drive or have a car or means to transportation. We pay $46,000 for the service currently, right now. They tend to do an increase every two years, and this will be our year that we'll be looking at an additional increase, depending on what, if any, other services could be identified. That's, you know, the amount of savings we have before us. So if there's another alternative that costs less, it wouldn't quite be as much as $46,000.
And I know this is something that we've discussed, or at least touched on lightly in the past. Trying to secure data from this particular provider has been extremely challenging. What information we have received in the past would suggest that there may be ridership from outside the city who is accessing the services at a discount, but the actual ridership information for city residents, locations about where they're going to and from, has not been provided to us despite numerous requests.
Next slide. So another option or idea would be to evaluate the contribution to Celine Main Street. Right now, our contract states that we pay $56,000 a year with up to $20,000 additional for expenses that are incurred for items like signage or maybe you can.
Flower baskets.
Yeah, flower baskets. So just depending on what this would look like, how we would, the ideas to restructure it, it's really depend, the savings are dependent upon the final level of contribution that Council would decide upon.
And Council may recall, the increase to this amount is relatively new. Previously, under, I believe, the FY '21 contract, the contribution amount was closer to $30,000 instead of $56,000. It would be my recommendation on this one specifically, and in talking with Celine Main Street, that perhaps a working group of representatives from this body and from their body talk about what could be done so that they're able to continue to main services, but perhaps with just slightly less of a contribution on the city's part.
Next slide. Leave collection. Currently, right now, if you look at what we have budgeted for the leave collection services that we currently offer, it's a redundancy service through a contract with waste management, and if you look at the cost that we have into $78,000 in the staff time equipment, would hopefully be redirected to other operational needs so that the cost would still appear elsewhere, but give us gains in the ability to tackle some of those other tasks on our plate. Next slide. Implement cloud BSNA. So if you look at the, we've all kind of chatted a little bit, I think, about cloud BSNA. It is the way that our ERP system is going. There has been less and less investment in our current BSNA modules. The basic way to think of this, and I know that this is going to be an item for discussion later this evening, but if you think about the modules and BSNA, currently, they're housed here at City Hall, and they are in little silos. So in order for them to talk to each other, you have to make that connection possible. Sometimes, it's not possible for them to communicate certain items that are needed, and it really creates a lot of barriers to having the information that you need to know without having to go into, you know, three or four different places to find it. Items like, just a simple example, someone comes in for a permit, and they paid for the permit, and they're ready to walk out the door, you know, how much time are we spending making sure that, okay, does that person owe us any money for their water bill? All that information for each resident is actually shown on a dashboard, so this is just one little example of what it can do. With this, with the cloud BSNA, it gives us a work order system. It saves and frees up IT time because all of the data is stored in the cloud, and it gives us a more secure platform because it is a large conglomeration of information where many municipalities' data is held. Has accessibility in real time. It makes, it so that you can access your information from anywhere. You don't have to VPN in order to sign in to get data. And I think that one of the biggest features that I can see for it really is that, one, the state is moving to a time where they're going to require ERP systems to be up in the cloud and to be, have these transparency modules. They're expecting it to be required within the next five years. So that's something that's really important to point out, but also just the over-operational efficiencies that we will gain from kind of having everything connected and talking to each other. As a part of this, we also will be able to tackle, help tackle one of our strategic goals, which is to, you know, really redo our processes and procedures and have them automated as much as possible and documented. So through the implementation, BSNA has people come in and meets with City Manager, meets with accounts payable, meets with utility billing. They each have their own independent specialists, and they walk through our current processes and procedures, how can we make them better, more efficient, and how can we apply them within the software. So that's certainly an additional benefit as well. So if you look at this, basically, we will be paying back the cost of the software over a three-year period from savings that we would experience through the absence of other software like Paycor and parts of ClearGov. Next slide. Another operational efficiency opportunity that we see is hiring an IT consultant. So this would be someone who could really help be a true backup for our IT, and not only be able to assist people with maybe some Help Desk stuff when Chris isn't around, but give us a second person who's in the know on everything that we're doing with our IT program. And kind of, you know, Chris, some of that second expertise of working with another person to, you know, kind of get together the best ideas for the city.
And we do view this change as something that will help the department heads to meet their risk mitigation goals by improving that redundancy in access to services.
Next slide. So here, we look at outsourcing lawn mowing, and just from the budgeted amounts and from, hold on, let me get down there, please. Looking at the part-time and full-time costs for wages and benefits and the equipment, right now, outsourcing would be a total of $112,000, so that was, the total difference would add to our fund balance about $150,000 annually. Not to mention that it does take up an extremely large amount of man-hours, which is about 4,000 man-hours of staff time. Next slide. Here are just some other high-level considerations. We have, I don't know, Pauline, if you want to talk about the.
So these are other considerations that we haven't done. So these are other considerations that we haven't done a full deep dive on the cost savings of yet, but have either been expressed to us by department heads or feedback from council that we'd like to potentially look at. We are already on the way to reducing our reliance on our HR consultants by training staff internally with those skills. We now have a dedicated purchasing manager position, which will help us improve our purchasing and procurement practices, which we do expect to be a cost savings. And we are transitioning the updating the fee book to that position as well so that there's more centralized ownership from the finance department. One other operational efficiency idea that we'd like to consider is the collection of real-time data on our existing vehicle, fleet vehicles. And then things that, those would all be internal discussions with department heads, relatively low-hanging fruit that we intend to go after or consider. And then on a larger scale, council considerations would be a more comprehensive review on a case-by-case basis of how much we waive in terms of special event fees, considering removal of passport services, which we did determine would be a minor cost savings, but also a significant man-hour savings. Considering the introduction of a facilities maintenance contract, as we know, we've discussed pretty extensively the fact that maintenance has been a low priority issue for our DPW because of other man-hour obligations. So that may be something that we can improve on by identifying an outside party. And I do believe Director Searls has a good line on an opportunity for that. We already covered outsourcing lawn mowing, and then, of course, considering any storm sewer projects be financed in the future as opposed to paying directly out of our general fund. Next slide.
So here, we're going to talk about some recent items that the city has taken, opportunities for cost savings, revenue and efficiency gains. We switched to fiber, so that had an impact of about, you know, 27, excuse me, $19,000. Investment in GovNIC, so we're estimating that this year, hopefully, we'll see about a quarter million dollar increase if rates stay the same or start to perform better. And then years going forward, really using that cash capital to drive investment increases up to $750,000. The engineering technician position, do you want to talk about that, Colleen?
Sure. We've discussed previously a budget amendment to create the engineering technician position, and this is driven by the fact that permit fees are trending up about 20%. So we view the position as self-sustaining, at least until such time as those permit fees might begin to decline. But at this point, we have not seen any let-up in them recently. And certainly, project management and ensuring that new developments have a watchful eye and someone to guide them through the process, start to finish, benefits the city in the long run as we're more capable of identifying what reimbursable needs might arise out of those interactions. As for next steps, so as we discussed at the beginning, we're really looking for council feedback and general direction, any thoughts on which ideas, any or all, that council would like staff to do a deeper dive on? Once we perform additional due diligence, we expect that some of these items, certainly things that are changes to everyday operations, would require public input, so the hosting of a town hall, either on individual items or holistically. And then finally, implementation with the goal of trying to implement as soon as possible, although again, some activities will be easier than others to implement quickly. Next slide.
I think that's the last slide.
Okay. And then Treasure Cole, do you want to talk about how, if all of these actions were implemented, how it would impact our fund balance?
So in looking at the projections for the next year that you were provided a copy of, unfortunately, it shows that our fund balance actually is reducing down to about 9%. So therefore, if we were to implement all of these changes, even the ones that cost us some money, we would be looking at a projection of about 16.7% fund balance.
City Manager O'Toole, Treasure Cole, anything else you'd like to share at this time? I actually, if Councilmember Kamara Sulak will indulge me, I indicated before that I was going to start with him, but I'm going to pull rank because I usually always go last, and I'd like to go first because I've actually had the opportunity to speak to the city manager, I think it was more than a month ago now, about several of these issues. And we'll have ample time for probably two or three rounds of questions. I'm going to limit everyone to five minutes initially. A quick question for our DPW director first. I'm going to start sort of midway through the presentation. Larry, this year and last year, can you remind me, how long was loose leaf collection? Was it approximately two months?
October through December, so. We started October 17-ish, mid-October, and finished second, third week-ish of December. Both, you know, two years.
So about two months.
Yep.
I think that's the only question I have for you. Thank you. I do see value in loose leaf collection. I think that's one of the special services that we provide that sets Celine apart from regional municipalities, but I do think there's an opportunity for cost savings by reducing the scope and duration of loose leaf collection, maybe down to 30 days as opposed to a month. That may need to be massaged and finessed, but I think it ought to be looked at further. And I, again, I do think there's some opportunity for us to save some dollars and cents. I'll jump back to the first issue, and I've touched on this matter before, Mayor Protem Girba and others have as well. But thinking specifically to the emergency sewer repair that was needed at, on Rosebud, I'll use a holiday analogy. I was elected to be mayor, not Santa Claus. So sometimes it's important to level with people even when the news is going to be disappointing, but that is something that I don't see us as an organization being able to do again, i.e. subsidize that type of repair from our general fund. So what I would favor is getting, putting into place whatever procedures, policies are necessary to execute a special assessment option for those type of infrastructure repairs when they're localized to a particular region or neighborhood. And I think that would negate then our need to use general fund dollars to subsidize said repairs. I, at this juncture, would not be in support of installation of downtown parking meters. I think the economic conditions in our downtown are currently fragile, and I wouldn't want to exacerbate that. We can go into depth at a later meeting about the fire department. If it's necessary to utilize the entire special assessment this year, then we'll need to do that. I think most people are aware that long-term, we're looking at setting up an authority and then a district-wide millage that would eliminate the need of the four participating municipalities to subsidize the cost of operations on an annual basis. Police dispatch, it has been about 10 years since we've looked at that. I would like to do a deeper dive into what it would look like to consolidate with Metro. I'm not beholden to doing that. That might not be right for our organization or our citizens, but I think it warrants some additional investigation, how that transition would be made. And I also think it would be valuable if my colleagues concur with that position to have a tour of the new dispatch center, which has been relocated to the west side of the county from where it existed previously downtown when we looked at this issue in the waning months of 2013 and 2014. Peoples Express, there needs to be a change there. I don't know if it was a result in cost savings, but that service is clearly subpar, and our constituents deserve better. And a baseline for any contract would be open and free communication and providing data when requested. And if they're not doing that, it's completely unacceptable. Celine Main Street, I think your idea about convening a work group to sort of plan for the future comprising representatives from Celine Main Street and city of Celine is ideal with the long-term goal, I think, of trying to reduce, while still providing funding, but reducing our costs long-term. And then I had had a previous conversation with DPW Director Searls about this. In fact, I think he mentioned it on Friday when he was interviewed by our risk mitigation team. I think outsourcing most of the mowing activity is a no-brainer. I think that's the low-hanging fruit here, quite frankly. I think that can be implemented for the spring season, free up our staff for more critical needs, and save us some money in the process. So I went through that pretty quickly. I'm going to jump back to Councilmember Kamara Sulak for questions. And again, council members, I was given some advance notice on these issues and had talked to the city manager about it, oh, maybe a month ago, when we had anticipated bringing this to city council. So feel free to offer any thoughts, insights, or to ask any additional questions. And the floor is yours, Mr. Kamara Sulak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is quite a bit of decisions to make, and obviously, this is important that we get back to our fund balance 15%. Staff leanings, priorities. Now, I recognize that there's not much wiggle room that if we were to do all of these initiatives, we'd get up to, is it 16.7? Unless we come up with some other ideas, but... Do you have any recommend, you know, specific recommendations with best practices? I do have a number of questions and thoughts, but I really want to make sure that staff has, you know, their input, and, you know, they're the ones on the front lines. We don't want to be cutting something and then pay for, you know, really pay for it in the long run.
If I may say, I think that, you know, City Manager O'Toole, her relationship with SAC is very in-tuned, and the department heads have all been consulted as we've worked through these ideas. So certainly, there's nothing up here that would be a surprise to anyone. They've all been discussed very thoroughly. So like I said, I feel that staff and the department heads, while I can specifically speak to certainly department heads, would all be in agreement with these ideas.
Okay.
Likely the one exception to that would obviously be outsourcing dispatch, which would impact certain individuals currently employed by the city.
Don't imagine they're excited with that one at all, but... Which I have different thoughts on. I know we've bandied about that for a while, that that's a very nice service that we provide at a high level for police protection and, you know, fast dispatch, something that we have control of. But I know there's a lot of moving parts there, and that I agree that we should look into that deeper and make sure we have all the pros and cons for that. I'm not excited about increasing the millage for the fire service. I understand the cost going up for those services, but I understand we're taking a deeper look, like the mayor said, at our portion and the way that the fire department, the efficiency and how it runs, so.
And if I may too, Mr. Kamara Sulak, I apologize for interrupting. I should have mentioned this earlier. The fire department hasn't even developed a first draft of its budget for the subsequent fiscal year. So the Budget Committee will be meeting in January and then taking a proposed budget to the board, which will then be, excuse me, discharged to the various entities. So a lot of this is, there are a lot of unknowns that exist today on December the 19th. Apologize for interrupting. Please continue.
No, no, that's good, that's good information. Leaf collection, I know a lot of people love the leaf collection, and that that is a service that I think is... That is valued. And yes, while people are used to it and we need change, I think we could look at finessing it with, like the mayor said, that the time period that we do that, because it is very enlightening to see the number of man-hours and, you know, the time and the money for both the leaf collection and for the lawn mowing. I mean, that's really substantial. So... I think it's a no-brainer with the BS, with the BSNA, that that seems like best practices. And we'll see how things go with Celine Main Street. Our businesses in our downtown still need Celine Main Street and still need to get back from many of the losses and to attract businesses and retain them. So I look forward to working with you and seeing what else is, you know, is developed.
Actually, Mr. Kamara Sulak, that's a perfect place to stop because you have just reached five minutes. Can I ask one specific question, though? Because I think one issue we could develop a pretty easy consensus on and maybe take action, establish a work group at our next regular meeting on January the 9th. Would you be amenable to city manager's suggestion about forming a working committee between Celine Main Street and the city of Celine to help plan for future financial contributions?
Definitely. I think that's a wonderful idea.
Very good.
Can I make one quick?
Please.
Parking meters, I'm not in favor of, also because of, we need as much business as we can, and that's not a significant enough impact in my mind right now. We can revisit it later, but...
Very good. Mr. Seal, you have five minutes, and if you, if you do not recall, or if you fail to acknowledge this in your remarks, I'll ask you at the end. But I'd like your response to whether you support the formation of a work group between Celine Main Street and the city of Celine.
I can start right off by saying, yes, I do favor the formation of that work group. I guess the question I would ask is, could you please tell me, just in dollar figures, what one percentage of the city budget is worth?
Sure. So if we had, we have about a million dollars, so 200, about 250,000 dollars would be the first batch.
So 350,000 is equal to about 1%? Okay. That was the major question that I had. I guess, I think all the things that have been mentioned, bear looking at, I'm more in favor of some of the cash producers, like I do favor, I think, paying for parking and so on, more so than reduction in service. I'd like to hang on to the services as long as possible, but if we have to let some of them go, I guess we do. I don't know if any of you read Mr. Grossman's remarks that I think came today about how his feeling that maybe if we tried to push the leaf collection responsibility off on our garbage collection service, that cost may go up. So I don't know whether that would occur or not, but...
Larry, do you want to weigh in on that? I think Celine actually appears to have a rather unique contract with waste management.
Yeah, currently, our contract is very unique in that we have a six-bag maximum with waste management. I don't think I would ever recommend opening up that contract to renegotiate it until it's time to put it out for bid, because right now, the prices are very good. So anything that we do adjustment-wise, I think we've got to kind of blend it because it would not be in our best interest to renegotiate right now with our end of contract coming up so soon, because six bags is not enough to get our leaves picked up.
Right.
And do you know when that contract expires? It's about a year out.
June 24.
Yep.
I think we need to move ahead, get more information in regards to all these measures that have been put on the table tonight. It's a lot of information to digest, and I would look forward to hearing more about some of these things in the future. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Seal. Councilmember Dillon, you have five minutes.
Thank you. So I appreciate that there was obviously a lot of thought put into this, and as Mr. Seal just indicated, I assume this is sort of a first blush, let's sort of fill the room and decide. I mean, I don't know that we're ready to take action one way or another, even just on general consensus here. I don't think there's enough information for that, at least for me. Kind of going through them, I would like to say, like, first of all, with the dispensaries, I would like to have that money earmarked towards something that comes in and not just sort of fall into general fund and figure out, you know, is that something we can use to build our equipment fund? Can we do that? Find a way to utilize it so it doesn't just evaporate? I mean, it's sort of found money, and I'd like to see it utilized. So as far as parking meters, I am absolutely in favor of parking meters. We all go to Ann Arbor, we go to YPSI. There are parking meters, Plymouth, Northville, there's a lot of parking meters everywhere. And I don't think it keeps people from coming to your community. I think it actually promotes people moving their cars. I think a lot of our issue right now are business employees that are parking in the lots all day. that are parking in the lots all day that create aspects of, then we don't have parking for those that come into the community. And that might find a way to kind of flush out that issue and work through it. I will say, though, I'm not in favor of looking at the picture of actual individual old-school meters. You know, it is much higher tech now where there's just QR codes or apps and your parking spots are all just marked as to a number. And it's very convenient, very easy, no change required. I'm going to kind of blush over very quickly the fire department, because I do sit on the fire board. I know that there's a lot of moving pieces on that end right now and trying to figure out how to move it in here. I mean, I will say that if people aren't in favor of moving to one mill, they're going to really struggle to move to a millage that will be more than one mill. So, it could be a great first step in getting people kind of used to those step increases. So, I'd like to consider that. Outsourcing dispatch, we've talked about this before and I know it's one of those topics that people are very passionate about on both sides of it. And so, I definitely would like to have some community involvement. I also would like to see some data, especially with our dispatch. You know, we've talked about this, that late overnight shift. How many calls are there? Does the building really need to be open? Things like that, you know, is there an option for a hybrid where we just outsource a shift and we still have a daytime shift? You know, what does that, if there's no dispatch, what does that do to the city staff's side of things? Does that mean that we need a greeter, we need somebody to facilitate things? Do we always have to have a sergeant in the building if there's people that need to do something? So, I think there's a lot of moving pieces that I'd like to make sure that we look at without question. People's Express, I think anybody that's ever watched a city council meeting knows that every time the bills come out and there's a payment to the city to People's Express, I comment about it because that service is completely inadequate for our residents. There are some other options available right now that I think if we can reallocate those dollars into a more proactive way, I don't see those dollars coming back as a savings at any point. I just would like to see them better utilized into transportation that helps other people. We've talked about this through the senior center. We've also talked about this with the healthcare task force in that, you know, we want to get people to where they need to be. And a lot of times that involves medical appointments and making sure that we've got the right resources for them. Celine Main Street, this is another topic that people are very passionate about. And I don't think that the city ever said that we were going to defund or anything with Celine Main Street. I think we've talked about possibly reallocating dollars. And with that, maybe that's the result of reallocating tasks and priorities of what should Main Street's role be? And what should, you know, there are all the pieces in that. Should it be economic development or should the city do economic development? Should it be, you know, events? Should it be, you know, this, should it be that? And I'm hoping that if we can develop this subcommittee, that that can kind of work itself out and figure out the tasks for it. I do have to say that the dollars currently budgeted are not, we, the city can't withstand that any longer. And I don't know if that even includes in-kind services, which I see you nodding your head. I assumed it did not and that is a significant time labor for all of our resources here, especially our DPW, which we keep talking about that we have a small crew and we're trying to eliminate tasks. People need to understand hanging banners is a three-man, two-day job. And it's, you know, I don't know that that's the most effective use of their time and sometimes it's not, it's just not going to happen if there's things that have to take priority. And so, figuring out if there's ways to do something different.
Let me stop you right there, because we're over the five minutes.
Okay.
We will come back, though, for another round of questions. And I did take that last comment, Councilmember Dillon, to imply that you would be supportive of the creation of a work group.
Correct.
Okay, with Celine Main Street. Okay, very good. Mayor Potem Girba, my apologies, I will come back to you.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll probably just hit across all of these and just kind of for information. One of the things with the storm sewers, and I'll start with that one. I still believe there may be an option there, but we haven't really explored it, of a class action against the development or who manufactured that sewer system, because we know we're not the only ones that's experienced these failures and whatever else. But it would be interesting to investigate that from a perspective. But I do agree with the mayor, these are expenses, if they're related to a specific area and a failure of those type of aspects, it's not something that should be on the backs of everyone in the city necessarily, especially when it's so localized. As we talked about tax growth, and that's one of the things that I looked at. Not only do we have a large growth of our tax revenue, or about, as you mentioned, about $195,000, but also our investment revenue. So, I'm trying to understand how much more revenue we have coming in and what are all the new reoccurring costs that will take up that new revenue that's being generated? So, having a better understanding of all of that, so that we know how we are delaying either the increase of our millage or offsetting some of those activities. As to the fire department, I anticipated the increase this year for the remainder of the amount. It's just that time, we needed to shift to that and we basically saved the community hundreds of thousands of dollars over the last 25 years that I've been on the city by taking it out of the general fund. It's time to implement that. I do have my concerns, of course, with the operations and the management oversight of that department currently and I'm concerned about how those operations are happening. So, whatever we can do to improve that situation, I'm supportive of. Dispatch, it's time. We've talked about this for the last 10 years. The last time we didn't do it because of situations related to the contract. Every one of our chiefs that we've had has struggled with maintaining staffing, being able to manage the staff that are there, keeping positions open. The numerous overtime hours, the amount of money that we have spent trying to keep police officers in those roles and such. Yeah, there are some minor concerns and issues that we are facing, but other communities in our, in Washtenaw County have achieved it. Myland, it just went in July, Pittsfield a number of years ago. Probably Chelsea will be coming along. They've got a new police chief. I'm sure they're going to be assessing theirs, so I think it's time. People's Express, dump them. I'm just going to be honest. Every time I hear them talk about that, people have concerns about either having their reservations canceled, having to wait three or four days, not being able to get a bus. One of the things that I was going to suggest is, and I did have a document, is the individual that came to us that spoke at the Celine Senior Citizens thing, excuse me, if I can do this, is the Ride Fifty Plus program, which is a program and application that you can help coordinate. Whatever we can do to probably get, working with this as an interim, may help, although the cost may be more expensive. It does provide for the aspect of low income and gives multiple different ways of achieving the ability to go to different healthcare facilities and such. As for leaf, I think maybe a hybrid program, shorten it and use our waste management. Again, I think the, Mr. Seale mentioned it, just to understand what it would cost. If there's going to be a concern, if all of a sudden we have a whole bunch more six bags by everybody, is there going to be an impact in collection or whatever? But I agree that if you move it down to two or three weeks, then it's up to everybody else to do it outside that window. We're still providing the service, we're just not going to make it a six-week service. Lawn mowing, fine with moving that out. I'm only concerned the cemetery. I would prefer not going with, what we used to do is the, I think it was...
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry to interrupt Mayor Potem Girba, but Mr. Searls is shaking his head and he commented on that on Friday. We would not be giving up, we would still do mowing on some of our premier assets, including the cemetery.
Because even if you use work release, in the past, we've experienced significant damage to the cemetery stones and not satisfaction with that. Software integration, whatever we need to do to make that happen. If you need a mandatory policy from this council, I want to see it done. This has been an issue for the last 15 years and it has not happened. And so, whatever Treasurer Cole is recommending and all of our directors, I want to see it happen. I want a timeline and whatever we need to make it in terms of performance or any type of thing, we will do that. Main Street, we're on the same page. I want to make our downtown successful, but I want to also address the economic development of all our areas within the city. There's probably a shared model. I am more than welcome to be a part of a group to work on that. We do have some disagreements, but I think it's more things that we're workable. It's just we all have to compromise and figure out where that's going to be. And then, lastly, marijuana, I was kind of looking at your numbers and trying to figure out 10 to 12 applications each year. What does that mean? And maybe you can go into it a little bit more, since we just only had seven applications. And I guess I'm looking at that, trying to figure that out myself.
Sure. So, real quick, the applications again are for medical and adult use. So, they had to file two applications and pay a permit fee for each use type. So, that...
Per year?
Per year.
Okay, thank you. That was always a thing that I was never quite sure of. Thank you. And then, lastly, what are we talking about in new services? What are we missing as a community that we haven't even addressed at this point? Because we, you know, after COVID and everything else, and I know that would be part of our strategic planning, but we're looking at taking away things, but we also need to address things. And then, lastly, the only other items I'd like to look at is, of course, and we're going to be talking about it later, the franchise fee affiliated with the Comcast and all that. If we have to, I know we have talked about the farms and our assets and museums, whether we need to scale back on that or not. We could provide a slight cut on that. But I do know that investment in those can't necessarily be pushed off much further in terms of certain things. And then, lastly, I hate to say it, but we have to look at benefits. As the city manager's mentioned before, at times, our benefits seem to be above the average significantly. And I'd like to look at that from a perspective of ongoing savings, that we may be able to address those to some degree. Although we do know that we need to retain employees, I still want to make sure that, you know, we're being cost management and effective. Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Girba. Councilmember Del Orco, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start with a question to Treasurer and City Manager. When you stated at the outset that in order for us to get back to our required fund balance of 15%, we would have to enact all of these items to get to 16%. Does that include the projection of increased tax growth or is it not accounting for that?
It does include the projection of increased tax growth.
All right, all right. So, I see that there are some one-time anomalies that may have brought us down to the percentage there right now. So, that's why I'm so concerned that we're kind of in such dire need to make such drastic measures at this time. As far as the Rosebud situation goes, I agree with the mayor that we're certainly not in any kind of position to subsidize something like that in the future if it were to happen again. I certainly would also support any type of clash action movement that can look into the longevity and the materials used in that development with the developer, because it's clear that those things are failing all across the state. I would want to evaluate pros and cons and have some legal analysis provided to us as a council in contemplating special assessments, because I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, I don't know what kind of legal challenges we may face as a municipality if we were doing both those kinds of special assessments. Just going through the list. I also agree that installing parking meters could be a source of revenue generated for the city. I don't necessarily think that it will be a deterrent to increase attraction to the city and shopping. It's something that almost every local municipality around us has implemented, even small towns like Chelsea and Dexter. You don't have to have a parking meter at every spot. You can have a kiosk, one kiosk per lot, that people put their card into and pay for a certain length of time. And I think that's certainly a way to generate revenue for the city. As far as fire services go, that's under a lot of reevaluation at the current time. There's a lot of things being considered on the fire board about future directions with the fire department. So, we all know that, as Mayor mentioned, we may be moving in the direction of a fire authority there. So, I'd like to table that discussion for the current time. Outsource dispatch, ahead of my tenure, a number of years ago, there was a report done by a third party evaluating what needed to occur in that department to make it more sustainable. And outsourcing dispatch was one of the items identified in that report. I know there's been a lot of controversy over this move in light of that. However, it's one of those items that have not been acted on and I agree it's time to move in that direction. It was a recommendation by the, I think it was called Moses Report, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe so.
So, maybe we can unearth that report and circulate it to council as a source of information. People's Express, it's not meeting the needs of the city. We hosted a master plan review session. I had the opportunity to sit down with the group, looking at public transportation and it was cited as a deficiency for the city. There are certainly a number of concerns related to public transportation, where the citizens feel we should move in a different direction. I'm not sure this provides any savings to the city, but it's definitely a relationship that we need to sever ties with moving forward. Contribution to Celine Main Street, we are at a place where we need to form a subcommittee and evaluate what kind of contributions we can continue to make to Celine Main Street. I agree, it's an essential need to the community and we need to move forward with it. However, there's been a lot of discourse over whether or not Celine Main Street's going to function in the capacity that they historically have been as a community events planner and less emphasis on economic development. So, we need to sit down and talk about that. If they're going to move in the direction of placing a greater emphasis on economic development, then perhaps those are dollars well spent. If their preference is to continue to function as a community events planners, then we need to pull some of that funding back. As far as leaf collection goes, I think it's a great service that is provided to the city. However, I do think there is room to be somewhere in the middle, where we can reduce the length of time that we provide that service, but not do away with it altogether.
Mr. Del Orco, can I stop you there since we've reached the five minutes? We'll have another round of questions, but I do want to get to Councilmember Rice in the event that she has questions and then I'll jump back to Mr. Comerius.
Certainly.
Thank you. You have five minutes, Councilmember Rice.
Thank you, thanks for the time. More comments than questions. I first would like to thank everyone for looking into the future and trying to mitigate some of the risks that we have. I'm really thankful for the efficiencies that the department heads are looking at. I spoke with Mr. Searls last week and they're really looking at making their department more efficient. I do have some concerns about stresses on constituents or any cuts that we may make there. Leaf collection, I think, is maybe a communication issue. I like the idea of doing like a shorter period of time with leaf collection, but communicating better that, hey, waste management, we'll pick up six bags of leaves per week. I don't think enough of our citizens utilize that surface. When I drive down the road, I see, you know, a few bags strewn here and there. Fire service management, I understand, you know, going up, using the one millage, yes, but I'm glad to hear that there is a big oversight coming ahead. I think there's a lot of constituents that don't understand how that works. So, a little bit of communication, I think, with the community on that as well. People's Express, all for cutting that. I have some neighbors who have attempted to use it in recent times and to no avail. I think maybe if we lean on the healthcare task force a little bit for that. They did have some conversations with some folks and the AARP folks that came with the, the, whatever they called it, the 50-plus ride, about moving dispatch to Washtenaw County. I think that's a great conversation to have. As far as creating an SMS work group, totally on board with that. I think we need to take a look at events altogether and economic development altogether. And I understand that Mr. Harrington is going to be looking a lot deeper into that as well. I think a lot of the confusion lies, like Mr. Del Orco said, in what is the purpose of Celine Main Street? And now that we have a new Celine Main Street Director, I think it's a perfect opportunity for us to restart that conversation, like, let's just start it all over again. Before moving ahead on any of these choices, I think a little bit more info on sort of the hows and whys in any of the citizen services cuts that are being proposed. Again, I'm fully on board with department needs. I think everyone's doing a great job evaluating the future now. So, any department recommendations, I think, are wonderful. More information on new revenue, I think, is a great idea as well, so that when we have conversations with citizens, we can talk about ways that the city is going to look forward to overcoming some of these gaps and ways that we're looking to fill some of these gaps by bringing in new revenues. Lastly, historical assets, I would like to take a look at those as well, as you mentioned, Mr. Girba. Just sort of where... Just sort of where, I know you guys run really thin. I say you guys, because you've been the lead on that for a long time. But I know you guys run really thin, as it is. But it's always a constituent concern that comes up, like, why is the city spending money on these types of things? So, that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you very much, Nicole. Appreciate those remarks.
Mayor, if I may, real quick, as we're going through any future rounds, if council members have specific items that they would like staff to prioritize first, that type of direction would be appreciated. There's obviously a lot here. We won't be able to attack everything immediately. But if we know what you'd like us to look at first or earliest, that would be appreciated.
Well, maybe when we do our next round of questions and comments, people can sort of prioritize some of these opportunities in terms of what they think is the low-hanging fruit that we should pursue quickly, and those that might need to be delayed or deferred until a later date. Before I jump back to Mr. Kamir Sulek, I would ask a question, or a favor, rather, of our new Main Street Director. So, it was unanimous amongst the existing council members and our new council member. They see value in City Manager O'Toole's suggestion about forming a working group to help plan for future support from the cities to Celine Main Street. I'd ask that you share that with your board. And if they're amenable to participating, maybe come up with three names from your side. We'll come up with three names from our side. And I think that we should act on this sooner as opposed to later. So, I would be looking to appoint those individuals at our next council meeting, which is the ninth of January, which means we would need the information and the names that Wednesday before. I believe that's the third, the third. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Mr. Kamir Sulek, back to you. Any questions for or comments for city staff?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also agree, looking at the Moses Report would be enlightening. But my, I think we've covered things pretty well and pretty effectively. But going back to revenue growth, and I'm all for being conservative. But we do have a lot of homes going up and some commercial businesses and operations that are new and that are coming on board, that are expanding. And while I'm not questioning, you know, the data, but just sort of looking at, like, what kind of absorption are we looking at for the residential? I know that can be tricky, but, you know, it would be nice if there was a not-so-conservative estimate and see what that looks like. Every little bit helps. And Celine is such a desirable community and destination. And those houses and those condos are going up so quickly. I feel a little optimistic about that, but just to have a little bit more data on the number of units, like, the number of commercial that we're anticipating or that may be on the fence, there's always that. But, and then, low-hanging fruit, I think we've touched on most of it as far as, there's a lot with the Fire Department, but that's not immediate. The, I like where we're going with our continual internal efficiencies and operations oversight. And, you know, some of the things have to, we need more time on, being this being the first round. So, I'm going to leave it at that.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kamir Sulek. Mr. Seal, if you'd like, another five minutes, it's yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess in terms of my top three priorities, I'd say, number one, doing something about charging for parking in this town, whether that be some kind of a kiosk affair. I don't think, I think parking meters are a thing of the past. So, some kind of a charge for parking in our public lots on the streets. I'd like to also join in this reevaluation of the contribution to Celine Main Street to see what we need to do there to be more effective there. But that's kind of maybe my fourth item on the list. I think we ought to reduce our leaf collection to make better use of our DPW personnel and their time. And lastly, I'd like to see us reduce our reliance on UHR consultants. It's not a very big money-saving, but it is a money-saving. And I think in some cases, we have redundant services there now. So, I'd like to see that occur as well. That's all I have here.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Seal. Councilmember Dylan, you have five minutes.
Thank you. So, trying to pick up where I left off. I think I talked to Main Street. Leaf collection, it's a hard one for me, because, I'll be honest with you. I watch them, and I see how hard they work. And I see that two-thirds of our staff are out picking up leaves. And I just don't know that that's the most effective use of their time. And I, it's a difficult thing, because it's not like, okay, we can say we're going to pick up leaves the second Saturday in October, because they may not fall then, or it may be snowing, or there's something like that. And we always get burned on this. Last year, we had to wait till snow melted, or they were plowing leaves because it was buried under snow. And there's a lot of issues with this. And they did a fantastic job coming back way beyond when they were supposed to, because so many people put leaves out after they were not supposed to put them out. So, I think that what we really have to figure out is residents' expectations. And we need to have a better channel of communication. So, if we want to do leaf collection, maybe it's one weekend out of the entire season. But up till that point, you've got to be using waste management for your leaf collection. And I know we say six bags. There's a lot of people on my street. We share. It's like, you know, you can put three in front of this house, and three in the front of this house, and make things work. I think that that's where, you know, neighbors can work together on things to make that happen. I also really struggle with leaf collection, because it is just, it impedes parking on streets. It impedes a lot of different things. And so, if we can have it at a very small window, then I'd be in favor. Otherwise, I would have to say, I think it needs to go away. Because it is, like I said, a service that's being provided through waste management. And I apologize, I don't have the slide for mowing to understand what exactly that was. So...
Yeah, there it is.
There it is. Okay. So, outsourcing it. I mean, I guess, understanding, yeah, we're going to gain the efficiency. And I guess having a realistic expectation of what it's going to cost to outsource mowing. And maybe instead having a different plan of mowing, where the parks get mowed on a less frequent basis, or something like that, is sort of trying to figure it out. I mean, I think that I shared, there are landscaping companies right now that are hiring guys to snowplow for $25, $25 to $35 an hour. We're never going to be able to compete with that. And so, thinking that, okay, we're going to find people. That's why we weren't able to find guys to mow to begin with. And so, if we're going to outsource, it could be a very large expense and take us completely in a different direction. So, I think trying to figure out staffing-wise, what's the best way to do things. The one thing I did notice, I'll be honest frankly, by the park at my house, the really big mower went away, and there were two guys on riding mowers this year. And so, I don't know if we can bring back some of the big equipment again and utilize things like that. That's way beyond, you know, my scope. That's how you manage your staff. I'm just saying that, looking at different options of how we can do things. The cemetery, I would be, I think you had said you were not going to outsource that part of it. And I would be very reluctant to do that, because I think there's a, we have a duty of care. And I want to make sure that we follow that. As far as BSNA cloud, I mean, I think that's the right way to go for us if it's going to connect everybody. Because for as long as I've been on council, we have bought different software packages. Or, oh, this is the latest, greatest thing. And either we don't implement it, we don't train people how to use it, or it's not compatible with other systems we have. So, if you can assure me that this is going to kind of check all of those boxes, you know, I'm going to be right in line with you on it, because I think that's really a big factor right now, is understanding. As a member of HDC, we see this happen all the time, where people are coming to us who haven't gone through permitting, or there's issues where it's just, there isn't a solid system in place. So, if it can help that, I would love to see it. You mentioned about hiring an IT consultant. I guess I want to look bigger picture on that. And one of the things that I have to say that I really would like to see in the very near term is understanding the org chart, understanding where we are and what your vision of staffing is for this organization. Because I think if we're going to look at moving people into different positions and such, and backfill, we need to understand, like, the new engineer that we hired, we say, oh, well, the permits are going to pay for that position. Well, what happens when the permits don't? Do we have a line item like safety net for that position? Or are we just going to get kind of, you know, oops, we're going to have to pull money because we're short? So, I'd really like to see that and have a really good understanding of what your vision is, short, near, long-term, so that we can kind of all get on the same page about it. I do have to echo what Mr. Gerba did say, is that I do think that there are two things that we have to look at. And one is the cable franchise peg fees that we need to look at. And, you know, what is the best avenue for utilizing those? And then also, we really do need to take a deep dive into employee benefits and understanding. We've talked about that when we're doing insurance, that we have not bid that out. And we've created some new benefits that I think are great for bringing people in. We just need to make sure that we've got enough funding source for those, and that they're in line with other municipalities.
Thank you. I may need to stop you there. Mr. Gerba, do you want additional five minutes?
Just a couple of things, as you mentioned. For my, for me, priorities when we look at it, again, and, you know, me being my background, that software integration, getting that work order system in place. Our risk management group has made that a clear indication that we do not have the data and the information to manage and understand what the work orders and what the needs are of staffing and the abilities of what we have currently for our crews and so forth. And Mr. Searls has mentioned that as of, as Treasurer. And whatever we can do to get this integrated and happening, I think, needs to happen. It's the issue of efficiency, and hopefully avoiding some of the problems and concerns that we had, not only with the water, but from the audit perspective, when I raised the concerns about receivables, and some other things, that the more that we have this integrated and actually working, it should be a priority. Number two, dispatch. If we are going to do this, we have got to make a decision and commit, because we've been, you know, dragging this idea out, or we've actually, you know, talked about it. But the Washtenaw County is not going to listen to us unless we're going to be serious about it. So, we've got to make that happen. I think that needs to start as soon as January or February. And as for some of these other minor issues, I think their management's concerns and issues, the leaf project can be resolved, that's not until November, or until next fall, figure that out. Lawn mowing, again, however, that's bid out in terms of, I don't know if we want to do a giant contract or give, you know, share the wealth. We've got a number of companies that could probably provide the service and help us out. So, let's keep our community employed. And then lastly, my third item, the IT improvements. We talk about that all the time. I know Mr. Schonk is working his tail off, trying to keep us up to the grade. We talk about security and concerns like that, that's been a risk management issue. And whatever we can do in that aspect. And then lastly, you know, the people express, that's a, just deal with it. I don't know how many days we have to give them notice, but we can figure out something with that and just drop it. But as you know, with the Fire Department assessment, that's going to be considered as part of our budget. So, I think that's the time we talk about it at that point. And for me, right now, that's basically my priorities. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Delorko, if you'd like it, you have another five minutes.
Thank you. I'm kind of looking at this in terms of how to prioritize based on things that I think are going to be the most time-consuming, maybe the most low-hanging fruit. Because things kind of move at a glacial pace in government, so we need to get these things on the radar. I would agree that dispatch has got to be dealt with. That needs to start moving forward. That's a priority for me. Getting that conversation started, getting that information out to the council and that direction moving. I've also heard concerns of other risk mitigation, sitting and hearing a common underlying theme of the siloing of departments being a problem, lack of information sharing, and no ability to generate work orders and inventory, and not having efficiencies there. So, I think implementing BSNA cloud sharing is going to be my second priority. And having that subcommittee formed to evaluate our relationship with Celine Main Street, getting that conversation started, looking at broader efficiencies there. Because we're contemplating hiring an engineering technician, potentially, you know, someone with a background in economic development. So, we're going to need to free up some revenue there. And then, you know, the other things that we talked about, probably less labor-intensive, time-consuming, would be severing our connections with Peoples' Express, outsourcing mowing, and shortening the duration of our leaf collection window. So, that's really all I have to say.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gerba. Councilmember Rice, anything, or Councilmember Elect Rice, anything more you'd like to add? You have five minutes.
Yes, thank you. So, as far as my priorities from this list, just overall, outsourcing dispatch. I do have some questions that come along with these. They don't need to be answered tonight, but I just want to put them on the record that maybe we can be informed of these answers at a later time. But how many jobs will be lost if we do outsource dispatch, just from a community standpoint? People will ask. Number two, SMS, reevaluating our relationship with Celine Main Street, how we work together. And with that, sort of tangentially, but sort of in the same realm, event fees. Do they cover admin only? Are they also covering services? Are we on par with other communities with event fees? What are we bypassing as far as event fees goes? Just an overall understanding of that. Lastly, department initiatives. I think managers making informed decisions, they should feel free to find cost-saving benefits. But also, I think this is a time where departments are really looking ahead at the future. So, if there are some initiatives that will cost initially, or cost down the road, but also maybe balance out with some other costs, benefits, I think that's a great way to look at things. And then, the earmarking revenue from the marijuana dispensaries, I think, is a really interesting idea. My only hesitation about that is, is there any flexibility? Should we have some extreme happening like COVID again, or some sort of natural emergency? Would we allow ourselves the flexibility to dip into that stash? So, it's just a question I had about that. And then, two more little small items. Parking, do we have a cost installation and maintenance estimate? Could we see that? And then lastly, passports. I know it's not one of the larger-scale initiatives that we're talking about here, but does anyone in the area offer that service, other than going to, like, the SOS? Does the-
Post Office.
I was going to say, does the Celine Post Office offer it? Okay. Then I would be on board with, again, it's a departmental choice. Small cost-saving efforts, I think, are wonderful from department managers. So, that's it. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Elect Rice. City Manager O'Toole, Treasurer Cole, anything else you'd like to add this evening? I think you got the consensus you were looking for in terms of the priorities. There are several, but I think probably there's three or four that rose to the top this evening.
I feel like we have what we need to get moving on, doing deeper dives on a few of these, and maybe starting to implement some of that low-hanging fruit.
Very good. Treasurer Cole, anything you'd like to add before we adjourn our work meeting?
Thank you very much for your direction and time tonight. And I certainly feel like I have a very good idea about where we need to place our time.
Very good. We appreciate the analysis and work that you both and other staff members have done on these issues thus far. We look forward to continuing the discussion and dialogue. Unless there's anything further, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the City Council work meeting at 6:57. Moved by Gerba, is her second?
Second.
Seconded by Dylan. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. I have it. Meeting is adjourned. We will start promptly at 7:00 PM. Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Meeting is adjourned. We will start promptly at 7:00 PM. Let's call the Saline City Council's Board of Representatives. If you'd please rise, I want this with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And as a reminder, there are copies of the agenda on the back table along with hearing devices, and we would encourage you to sign in. Members present this evening are Councilmembers Kamira Sulak, CEO, Del Orco, Dylan, Mayor Protam Girba, and myself, Mayor Morrow. From city staff, we have City Manager O'Toole will be with us momentarily. City Clerk Royal is here. Assistant City Manager Getzmann, I don't believe, is with us. Community Development Director Harrington is here, along with Treasurer Cole. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Moved as submitted.
Moved by, Dylan be the mover and CEO be the second to approve as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to excuse the absence of counsel, or colleague, Councilmember Kraus?
So moved.
Moved by Kamira Sulak to excuse the absence. Is there a second? I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
A motion does not pass. We move on to citizen comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make a comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? Mr. Manuel, please. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. And looking at the agenda item, I guess I have a question. Is the property that's a commercial property by Swisher Realtors on Michigan Ave, is that going to be discussed tonight as far as that being a dispensary?
Yes.
It is. What number would that be on the agenda?
1080 East Michigan Ave.
Yes, the address is 1080 East Michigan Ave. Yeah.
Okay.
And you'll actually, Mr. Manuel Sherman, you'll have an opportunity to comment at, at that point as well.
At that point in time. Okay. I just wanted to confirm if it's on the schedule.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments? Please.
Good evening. Ben Goodman, West Side of Town. Last council meeting, we had the dispensary going near Renshler Farm up for discussion, and it didn't pass. It was 3-3. I think that's very telling, because there's a lot of us here in this room that think that's just a bad location for a dispensary to go. You're close to Renshler Farm, which is a museum and historical property. And we take value in that because it provides services to the community as well as children. There's not a buffer. People park all along there to go to tractor supply, to go to the back where New to You again is. We have lots of community members with disabilities that work there. This is just a bad spot in general. We have plenty of other dispensaries coming in. And tonight, we can, as a community, stand up and say, okay, we, we support some of you coming in, but there is such a thing as the wrong place and the wrong time. So I encourage you all to please vote no tonight for that dispensary. And let's protect our Renshler Farm. Let's protect our kids. Let's protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Any additional citizen comments on agenda items? Defer to the city clerk. Did we receive any communication case in writing in advance at tonight's meeting? We did not. Then we'll proceed to the one and only presentation, which is an update on local cable access. Ladies, thank you for joining us. If you want to take five, 10 minutes to share an update, and then we'll do a round of questions. And again, I'll begin to my right and into my left.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Anna Britnell. I'm the Executive Director of Communications and Community Relations at the district. I'm here tonight. Miranda will introduce herself, and then Ben will have a piece of the presentation as well.
Miranda, I was the Assistant Superintendent for Finance at Saline Area Schools.
And I don't know when he's coming up, Ben Goodman, Digital Production Coordinator for both of us. Just a little bit of history. I wanted to start backwards. Previously, it was called SCTN Director and lives kind of in the community ed world. This position has existed for some time and has always provided as a resource to both the city and Saline Area Schools. My role was new in July of 2020. And slowly, as, as that role started to find its way within the district, we were in the middle of a transition with the employee that previously held the role that Mr. Goodman is in now. And we were trying to find some structures that, where we could complement each other. So what we did is we, we took a look at how that role exists and really started to evolve its purpose. So we did that in a few different ways. We, we changed the title of the position, which is now Digital Production Coordinator. We changed the physical location of the position. So Mr. Goodman actually has an office at Central Office right, right near us, where we are able to communicate on a daily basis. And then we really looked at kind of like the oversight and the mission of the projects and how they could mutually benefit both entities, the city of Saline, Saline Area Schools, and then find ways to add kind of create, creative content for both of us. Since then, I do feel like it's been nothing but positive. We, Colleen and I spoke, and we thought maybe 18 months in here, we could, we could bring it to you to present some of the things that have been happening. Miranda's going to do a little bit of the financial review, so you can understand that piece. And then we're going to have Mr. Goodman go through, I think we did five of our favorite projects from the district, five from the city, and then five that are hybrid. When the, when the commission meets monthly, we kind of go through that agenda and look at, you know, what's upcoming to make sure that we're covering the mayor and fire and police and the rec center. And we look at those things in the city that are really, really important to make sure that they're all, I'm getting some coverage. And then what he's done within the district has been phenomenal. Beyond just adding kind of creative content for, for my department, he also has been able to oversee the live crew, which is a group of students at the high school that are working after school hours to film and learn how to produce content. And that's, that's been phenomenal. And he's really been changing kind of the pathway of some of our students. So that's been fun to watch.
So and for the financial part of this, it kind of really comes in in two buckets. It actually comes from the city treasurer to Saline Area Schools. And we track those completely separate and completely separate funds. One piece of it is deemed as franchise fees, and those have a little bit different purpose. Kind of goes to offset the personnel cost of that department, but then any other things that would not fit into the peg fee category as well, if there's licenses and things like that that do not fit. So on the right side, you see the peg fees. Those are basically specifically set aside for equipment. And so, like I said, those are tracked separately in their own separate pot that kind of rolls over from year to year that don't necessarily always get spent down. Whereas the personnel costs are, are more than, than what we receive for our franchise fees.
As you can see from the slide, we do city projects. And besides planning commission and city council meetings, I've done a lot of different events throughout the community. The five examples we used are the farm, Renshler Farm. I started getting out to Renshler Farm, and I've really, really grown to love that place. It provides so many great historical options to the city as well as, they do a lot of great activities for children, and I know my kids appreciate it. DPW with Larry. Larry and I have probably filmed together, what about? Did Larry leave?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, darn. Didn't even notice him slip out. Larry and I have probably done about 13 or 14 projects together over the last calendar year. We do a DPW newsletter that goes out to the community. We make a video out of it. It's another medium to get it in the hands or eyes or ears of our citizens in this community. Every year, we do a job fair, Economic Development Job Fair video. That's one of Brian's, my, your, our favorite projects to do. It's really fun. And last year, we did a really big project, and we're going to be starting it again this year in January. Citizens Academy, that's with Sarah Massey. We're highlighting each position in the city and, as well as departments to kind of inform citizens what that person's job is, how to contact them, and it kind of gives them overall how the city government functions. And then last, you know, like I said, our city council, planning commission, work meetings, as well as town halls. We stream those live on the Saline Video YouTube channel, and people can watch them after the fact as well. It's kind of like an on-demand. So they're consistently available to our community. Our district projects, we've done Weber Bliss One Room Schoolhouse, which is also a historical property. Teacher spotlights, we, those are probably, and those are my favorite. We go in the classroom and highlight a teacher doing some sort of academic or project-based learning assignment, and we release those on social media to kind of show what the teachers are doing in our school system. The new hire video, that's always a hit. Every summer, we record all the new hires that come in, and we have some theme. Last year, we did Top Gun. Next year's very secretive, but I'm actually really looking forward to next year's video. And then Foundation for Saline Area School events. We do the spring fundraiser, the fall fundraiser. And we do highlight the grants that are being presented to teachers and students by the foundation. And then Saline Live Video Crew, I work with students, and we cover a multitude of events in the community. We just did the holiday parade. We did Summer Fest last year. We did the Masline Pageant, as well as the, the different events going on Friday night at Summer Fest. Poor weather kept us away from doing the Celtic Festival this year, but we will be there next year. And we do Saline athletic events, musical events, and other events within the community. And these are what I call hybrid. These are both city and school and community-related. We do the stuff to bust every summer. That's at Summer Fest. I get on the bus and I film and take pictures of kids going out to the different stops, picking up school supplies for community members that can't afford to get school supplies. The Saline Fair, we, we go around and film and record it and do a video for the Saline Fair every year. Election forums, this is the first year I've done these with the community, but they were a hit. We did an election forum both at Liberty and here at City Hall. And it was a big success. And then, of course, holidays. We've done the trunk or treat. We've done the holiday parade. And, and a few other events to celebrate the holidays here in Saline. And then video shorts, we do different video shorts. The DPW ones are examples of that, but we've also done one for the Saline Water Main Install on 12. We did one on the Pleasant Ridge project, so people could be updated on what was going on, what was taking place. So if it impacted their area where they live, they understood what was going on. And then we're actually getting ready to do some more shorts with Larry, hopefully starting in January, about moving your car off the road during snow emergencies. And we talked about next year hitting up loose leaf collection. So those are the shorts that we have done. And questions?
Thank you both for being here. Appreciate the presentation. And you're right, or you alluded to this earlier. Ben has done a phenomenal job, a great resource for the community, and we appreciate your continued service. Before I defer to my colleagues, Councilmember Dylan, is there anything you'd like to add as a member of the local cable commission?
Yeah, there's a couple of things I'd like to say that, you know, in the last year, we've really, Ms. Britnell sort of hit upon it, which is that we've really kind of restructured what the group was, what the purpose was, and how projects were going to be done. And we've become much more systematic about that, and we've created a process. And it's, it's a very accountable system. So I think that's been a very successful transition, and I really appreciate that, that she's brought that aspect to it. I think going forward, I think our next 12 months are going to be sort of looking a little bit more into the equipment, the numbers, the things like that part of it, and in how to better utilize our time and dollars collaboratively as to what we can. I do want to highlight that we were able to use peg fees. That's how we got our televisions that are in the rooms today. That's how we get our video equipment. That's how we get upgrades to microphones and such. That's where those dollars come from, is directly from the peg fees. And like I said, that's part of the process is that we then, when we need something, we sort of apply to the schools, and they order it, and then it comes through. And so I think we can work through that process a little bit more. There, there's a lot of challenges with this committee. Comcast being number one. Comcast does not share the number of users on their system, so we have no idea at any given time how many people even subscribe to Comcast in our community or that watch our cable access channel. They will not share that information. So we just sort of go with community feedback. And we've, we've kind of expanded beyond the channel. We now have YouTube channels and things like that. So we hit a lot of different, you know, parts to, to make sure that the information gets out to them. And then I will end very quickly with a shameless plug that we do need a new member on the cable commission. The requirement, though, is that you have to be a city of Saline resident and a Comcast subscriber. So if you are interested... So if you are interested, please get in touch with me.
We don't know how many there are.
Thank you. Mr. Kameras, who like any questions for our, our guests?
Yes, thank you. This is a nice presentation, and Mr. Goodman seems to be everywhere. So how does, how is that managed of what projects, what events that you cover so that it's, so that's fair and balanced? And so what if all of a sudden there's something else really exciting going on in the city or through the school that is going to, that would benefit from being highlighted?
Sure. I think the meetings that we talked about are really helpful because there's, there was, we actually have a chart, and it shows the four kind of areas of the city that we know that we need to cover quarterly. They work through the meeting schedule far in advance. Ben already knows that in 2023, we have no unexpected overlap from a meeting standpoint because we know that obviously takes priority is getting these meetings done live and streamed. But if, if it, if it does happen where there's a conflict, we sit down and talk about it. Ben and I meet once a week beyond just the cable commission, and we're in pretty much daily communication about things that need to get done. He knows very well that if I say, hey, Ben, can you go cover this? And he's got something else going on, he just lets me know. And then we talk through kind of what that priority looks like and how maybe we can split and be in two places at once and, and take on things together. So it's been working really, really well.
I think I've seen Ben two places at once. Worried about the, the growth, and this is a great, this is a great resource.
Yeah.
That this has really been an upgrade.
Absolutely.
And so is there, is there an ask attached to this?
No, no ask, just that we continue to support the position, both from the city and, and the district. Obviously, we support it. We've, he's got an office, central office, and he's involved in everything that we do. And there's now teachers and other administrators directly reaching out to Ben saying, hey, can you do this? And that's where I kind of have to stick my nose in and say, hey, we, we've got a schedule. Let's make sure that it fits in with Ben's schedule, and I'm going to encourage him to take some time off here in the next couple of weeks, for sure.
And is, are there any internship opportunities? You work with the, the students and, you know, what, what a, what a fun and dynamic, you know, job, and, you know, maybe help, help you at the same time cover everything? And?
So we have a live video crew. It's a group of students. Whether they're in the video class at the high school or not, I, I accept all of them. It is sponsored by Community Education, so they, they come and work for me. So in terms of interns, I have a few graduates that have reached out to me, and I'm working with community on whether or not I can bring them back or not. They have to go through the background process and stuff like that. It takes time. But I potentially have two students coming in the springtime to come and work with me. They're local. They go to Washtenaw Community College, and they've showed interest in coming back and help. So yeah, I do have some help.
Okay, great. That's good to hear. I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. CEO, any questions?
No questions. Just say thank you for all your hard work.
Mayor Portin-Girbough?
Couple of statements and questions. I, I've appreciated the improvement we've seen in some of the, just the broadcasting and everything, having our meetings broadcast consistently, the YouTube channel, even the school board meetings from that perspective, where you're able to be more informed to the public. How is Channel 18 coming along? I still think there has, there's hiccups every once in a while.
Yeah, we're, I'm currently in a hiccup right now. I think somewhere this weekend Comcast lost power because it wasn't the high school. Sometimes when we lose power at the high school, the audio will go out, and then I go do a reset, and it'll come back on. Janet and I have communicated, you know, by text messages. Is it working now? Yes. Is it not working? Correct, it's not working. So on air, and when we lose power at the high school, that can be a problem, but I think Comcast had an outage this weekend because I just checked it when I came in here because somebody said it was down, and it's down, so I'm going to go address that tomorrow morning.
Sounds like a similar issue I'm having with Frontier. They've been there every day for the last.
Yeah, it's, it, it, it's, it's odd because sometimes we get a thunderstorm, it goes out, and then it comes back on. It's just.
I do know that's one of the consistencies, concerns that I've had expressed to me is that we've had that go for weeks without anyone actually tuning in.
Yeah. Well, when I took over, I don't think they had updated content that was ours from 2017 was last, was updated.
And I know you've been working on that, and I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
This may be for the city manager, but also for the cable commission. Are we in compliance with all the financial reporting and expectations that we have that are a part of our contract? Because there have been concerns about, you know, exactly knowing how money's been spent and how equipment's been dispersed or removed and sold or whatever else.
So we do have language in the contract that upon request, the, the schools would furnish an equipment list of how peg fees are being used. I don't anticipate any issue with that. I know that they keep track of it internally as well.
Again, I think I've been asking for this since February 2021, so I'd like to see that happen sooner than later.
Sure.
That's one of the concerns that people have asked about accountability. Other than that, I'm looking forward to improving even maybe broadcasting some more of our meetings and things. I think there's other commissions and such that people would find informative as we start to try to get more information out to our constituents. We may not have a big audience, but I do know some people will tune in after it's shared on Celine posts, so appreciate everything you're doing. So keep it up, the good, good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Portin-Girbough. Councilmember Delarco?
No questions, just a comment that there's a noted dramatic improvement in the way things are compared to the way they used to be. So I appreciate the service you provided the community, and I encourage you to keep going.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time very much. Happy holidays. We proceed now to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for discussion.
Moved and submitted.
Moved by CEO to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamera Sulek. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say a bit, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to public hearing 22-310, special land use for medical marijuana provisioning center at 1080 East Michigan Ave. The first motion will be a motion to open the public hearing at 7:24, affording the public to speak to this issue.
Moved to open.
Moved by CEO to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dylan. All those in favor of opening the public hearing at 7:24 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say a bit. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to a special land use permit for a medical marijuana provisioning center at 1080 East Michigan Avenue? Please come to the podium. Yep, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a formal presentation, but I just have some concerns and maybe some questions. I reside at Burwick Park, which I walked out the area, which is about 900 feet from our property. So our property, the Burwick Park, is located here. There's a well over 100 citizens that live in that area, elderly people, seniors, retirees, and families. Also, within probably 500 feet, there's a school, the driving school, Champion Driving School, which kids go to that school. The concern that I have as a citizen, as I, when I moved into Celine, I came from a small community that was very much like Celine. I'm just thinking about driving down Michigan Ave and what do I see as reflection of this community, which is a community, a family, and a business sends a message. And it might be subliminal, but it's sending a message of the character of the community. And again, what I like about Celine is the character of the community. As I drive in, and not only myself, but other people, as they drive into Michigan, the state of Michigan, all the billboards are dispensaries, marijuana, and where you can get this. So there's so much of that, that they can go other locations beside Michigan Avenue. You got Adrian, you got Ypsilanti, you got Ann Arbor. So there's so many of these facilities that, again, that character could be diminished by people that's coming into our community. The other concern that I have, I'm not for sure if there would be cash exchange in this facility. If it is, I can show you statistics and data, a crime that increases as a result of that. At a bar, they have a bartender. I don't know if this facility will have a bud tender that's looking at the quality of this stuff that they're selling. We can look in the media and see what is being put into substance and things that are just killing our kids, killing our youth, killing our children. So how is this being examined? I hope the council has looked at that to find out if they do have a way of quality control of what they're selling. If not, then that need to be tabled and discussed. So these are just some of the concerns that I have as a citizen. I could bring 100 people in this room from Burwick Park easily. I've talked to the president, and I've talked to others. They didn't know that this was going on. I didn't even know what was going on until I attended a meeting a week or so ago to find out about the gym that's going to be coming in, which is very positive for the community. That's, that's good for the community. But as far as the dispensaries, my concern also, there's 6.54 acres of land. I believe it's owned by the city. I believe that they're going to give you a pretty penny for it. Money doesn't mean anything as far as changing that character. So again, that, that might be my ticker for my time, but I just want to let you know that there's strong opposition towards this, and there's many other people that would support me as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manuel. Appreciate it. Are there any additional citizen comments? There appear to be none, and the chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing at seven, what do we got, 7:30, 7:27? 7:27, moved by Girbough. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Delarco. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say a bit, the motion carries unanimously. First motion or the first substantive motion on this pertaining to this particular item will be a motion to acknowledge the memo dated November 17, 2022 from Recording Secretary Ritchie and to approve with conditions or not to approve the special land use at 1080 East Michigan Ave for a medical marijuana provisioning center with the following four, five conditions as outlined on tonight's agenda.
Move to acknowledge.
Okay, moved by Girbough to acknowledge receipt, seconded by Dylan. In Recording Secretary Ritchie's absence, Mr. Harrington, do you care to comment on this issue? And perhaps you could even address for Mr. Manuel's benefit or any other citizens who may be watching or reading about this, where this proposal is at in, in the process and what additional due diligence will need to be done?
Absolutely. So the proposal has received preliminary site plan approval and a recommendation for the special land use, which you all about to vote on. Loom, who is the applicant, still needs to submit a final site plan, and that more has to do with the specific characteristics of the property, parking inflow, outflow, signage, things like that, than the specifics of the use itself. So this is the time to talk about the use of marijuana, and then the final site plan is more of the time to critique aspects of the site and how it's laid out and what will occur with the site. So the Planning Commission did hear this case and did recommend approval unanimously, I believe. We did establish five commissions, five conditions at that meeting that we believe should be carried forward into any approval that you may give it this evening. To answer your, your questions earlier, sir, so quality is controlled by the state. Each of these dispensaries has to be licensed through the state. The city does not give unique licenses, or we do give unique licenses, but part of that application is proving that the state has certified that you're in operation. The state is very vigilant on the quality, the quantity, and then from seed to dispensary, they're, they're pretty strict about all of those different things, monitoring what's going in it, who's touching it, who's handling it, how it's moved. So that's not handled by the city, it's more handled by the state itself. But they are required to submit security plans to us amongst odor control methods and many other things in order to achieve a license, which this applicant has provided us in its totality. Otherwise, the application would not be in front of you today. Really, the only interesting thing as it relates to this specific case for medical marijuana had to do with the abundance of parking that Loom proposed on the site. Having a discussion at the Planning Commission meeting, most of that parking seems to be driven by the number of staff that they intend to have on site, which seems to be relatively higher than other dispensaries that have come before the city. We don't have any reason to believe that this location is going to be specifically crowded, although Loom, as you may know, is one of the larger names in cannabis in Michigan. So that, that probably is part of the factor for their choice of parking as well. The city continues to have ongoing negotiations about the sale of the property with Loom as well, although I believe it's still contingent at this time.
Very good. Do you have any, primarily for Mr. Manuel's benefit, do you have any idea when the applicant will submit for final site plan?
At, at this point in time, no. Usually, they wait till after they receive an approval for the final, for the special land use to submit the final site plan. Loom's preliminary site plan was rather elaborate. There are known wetlands on the site, which made it necessarily more elaborate to submit a preliminary that has more details on engineering reviews, natural resource consequences, things like that. So I, I would imagine it would be in the coming weeks after an approval, or depending on how this case goes, they would submit a final site plan.
And to alleviate some of the gentleman's concerns, you can confirm that the petitioner would not be able to begin construction activity or pull building permits until after a final site plan has been approved?
That is correct.
And Mr. Manuel, I had provided you Mr. Harrington's contact information. If you or any other resident of Burwick Park would like to reach out to him, feel free. We'd also be happy to notify you if and when this is, this issue is considered for a final site plan approval at the Planning Commission level.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can add, so just for the public's benefit too, the process of like whether or not a dispensary is allowed to locate in, in Celine is not entirely subjective. It's not a case by case thing. There are specific standards they have to meet for a special land use, whether the, the city council would have to find against that they didn't meet these specific standards. So I'd be happy to follow up with you on those standards as well and how they're applied.
Very good. Are there questions for Mr. Harrington? Councilmember Dylan?
Thank you. My question is that we're providing a special land use on property that may not stay the same parcel of property. So I sort of feel like, are we putting the cart before the horse? If this property as it stands is divided or changed in any way, how does the special land use follow?
So the question then would be, is the change material to the site? So did the Planning Commission approve a site plan, assuming all the, the pieces and components to be true? So, for example, if they were to remove an access drive out of a subdivision, that would potentially be a consideration for material change because the Planning Commission likely viewed how people were coming and going to the site, and that access drive was likely part of their decision making. You know, any potential subdivision involving this site would require removing an undeveloped portion of the land off of the site, which I think is a little different and might not necessarily constitute a material change. However, we can have that more thorough discussion at the Planning Commission. But if, if the site were to be subdivided and an undeveloped portion of the site were not to be any more, no longer included in the site in its totality, I don't know if I would necessarily constitute that as a material change unless it had severe stormwater or other natural resource implications.
Okay.
And I will also note, the, the developer has not expressed explicitly that they intend to subdivide. Right now, the contract is still as it stands that they have the obligation to develop the back portion. It doesn't stipulate whether that would be subdivided or not.
Okay. But so why would we not finalize that aspect of it?
So I, I guess it's usually too in the sale of, of land for marijuana or even other purposes, it's contingent on the city's approval. So it, it's kind of a catch 22 there in a sense, too. If we do deem the, the subdivision to be material, that, well, they're not going to purchase the land until they know they have the approval, which is a very common practice, not only for marijuana, but for other, for other uses as well. So it's, it's difficult to, to approve it before the subdivision if they're not interested in subdividing unless it's approved. Like I said, it's somewhat of a catch 22 in that sense.
They also wouldn't be able to subdivide until they had a control of the site. At this point, the city has control of the site.
Right. So we control the narrative of it. So why would we go ahead and give them a special land use on the entire parcel if they may not actually utilize that entire parcel? And it, as you had indicated, there is talk of changing drive routes on, within that property is my understanding. So I mean, that right there is, is, is one of the things that you just said would be a condition.
There, there's, there's no consideration of changing the drive route to the retail facility. It would just be to a potential redeveloped back portion. So again, we have to operate off of the existing contract language. The existing contract language stipulates that they're buying the entirety of the parcel, that they have an obligation to develop the rear portion. There's nothing about it being a separate parcel at that time.
And so what happens if they don't develop it, or they don't purchase the back parcel?
The city, the city has in the contract that they have to return that portion to us at no cost.
But where does, does the special land use stop at the property law?
So the special, sorry, so the special land use follows the applicant and the property. So if, if Loom were to forego an aspect of the property to somebody else, whether that reverts back to the city, whether they developed independently, they would not have the right at that location to open up another dispensary or another, even addition to their dispensary because all, any, any site plan, any floor plane, any floor plan changes would then, or floor plan, floor area expansion, I apologize, there's a lot of different words that go with that. So any floor area expansion would require an additional SLU review. So one of the items that the Planning Commission heard at its last meeting had to do with simply storage, and they're not actually expanding exteriorly speaking in the building, but they are expanding onto the second floor. And because they're taking up previously owned office suites, which were in office use and making it into as mini storage use, they have to re-go through the SLU process for that expansion. So if Loom were to ever change in the footprint, or if they were to sell off this back portion, the SLU doesn't exist in perpetuity for whomever wants it. It follows the applicant and it follows the specific floor area and the specific building in sight that they proposed at that time.
Okay. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Gearbar?
That was going to be my clarification. You're, you're saying that we couldn't put a condition in this to say that any potential, just to guarantee it, any future land split or division of that property clarifies that it's not to be used for marijuana, or it reverts back to the original status or something?
The original zoning.
Counsel. Yeah, I apologize. The attorney is present. Did you catch that, that question, Anthony? If you care to come to the dais and address Mr. Gearbar's concern.
Good evening, everyone. Tony Chubb. You know, and I haven't been involved in this particular deal. I think this predates our service with the city. But as far as the reference that you added, I think you were speaking about a sixth enumerated condition that would speak to the land use for the piece that's potentially split off, whether it be reverting back to the city and what would happen to the remaining portion. I think that Mr. Harrington was correct. When we look at the SLU piece for the portion of the property that they maintain, it's really going to be, you know, did they substantially change the footprint for parking of the building, traffic flows, things like that? And that's really what would be the indicator as to determining whether the SLU is impeded by the split. But I think that we could add a condition, what do you think, Ben, that would say if the land is split, any portion that is removed does revert back to the city, if that's my understanding of the agreement?
The developer currently has a period of time, I believe 10 years, to develop the back portion before it reverts to the city. So it's not triggered on a land division.
Okay. And the contract speaks to that?
Yes.
Okay. So then the, so then the SLU special conditions likely wouldn't need to be amended there. It sounds like it's dealt with within the document itself.
The only comment that I have is if they decide not to build, just, I don't want to give them both kind of fits. Say to decide that they do not decide to build the marijuana facility on that lot and decide instead to sell it after they've closed down.
You can't sell your SLU. So it's non-transferable. So a new applicant would then have to apply again, and it would actually likely be buffered out from some of these other locations that exist with the new ordinance. So the, the new, a new applicant at the site would be held to the ordinance as it is written today, which is 1,000 feet parcel to parcel. So you, but the SLU approval you give to them, in theory, is not something they can then sell to somebody else. It's not like a liquor license in that sense, that it would be a new applicant. This is the same issue that we just ran into with Planet Fitness, where yes, they're applying for literally a site that was previously a large gym, but because they've sold it, because of the use was non-continuous, because the owner of the property and the applicant and the operator is different, it, it all results in them needing to reapply for the special land use.
So even if they, and I'm just thinking that, you know, the SLU runs with the, used to run with the property. So you're saying it.
It runs with both the property and the applicant. It's, it's both. So you can't pick up your SLU and move it to a different location in the city, even if you're the applicant. And the, and a new, and it doesn't really run with the property, so to speak, because it, it exists with both the applicant and the property at that location at that time.
So even if the applicant owned both pieces of property and SLU, and they decide to sell the front part off for a commercial business, something different, and yet keep that back two acres and want to turn that into a marijuana facility, what, that can't happen. That's the, that's the.
Well, the floor area expansion itself would then instigate the SLU process to go, to begin again. So because they're proposing a different site with a different building and because our ordinance necessitates that for every SLU, you need a site plan. I believe that that's how that process would unfold.
No, I just want to make sure that we have those guarantees or those roadblocks in there because it would be, it would behoove us if we didn't do something correctly at now, then to wait and find out later on that you could split that off and yet the SLU runs with the property. So, okay. So I guess you've explained it to my satisfaction. Thank you. Thank you, Tony.
Yeah, of course. Thank you, Tony. Any additional questions for staff? Mr. Delarco?
Just briefly, I, I see that there are a lot of conditions coming through Planning Commission on, on this preliminary site plan approval. And one of the reoccurring themes is this business about curbside service. And if we're using the St. Petersburg location as an example of their business model, that, that's a critical aspect of their business model. So I want to make sure I understand this correctly. Planning Commission has banned curbside service until some version of an ordinance is created that allows this. So I, I want to make sure that the applicant is under no delusion that that's a foregone conclusion.
Yeah, that was a conversation that we had at the Planning Commission with the applicant specifically. It's a point of conversation that's come up with each applicant at this point, I believe. Most of them don't seem too concerned about the curbside pickup being allowed or denied for a brief period of time. The reason why we're putting a pause on it is because our ordinance is very hazy on whether it's actually explicitly allowed or not. And it's an item that I'll bring to counsel likely in January amongst others to get, just get your thoughts and clarification, the direction you'd like to see that ordinance go. Do you want to outright ban it? Do you want to allow it with specific conditions? How should we approach that issue?
And the applicant seems comfortable with either decision.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I could comment on that, as planning, I was the one that actually requested that we be consistent in every one of these applications to include that so we didn't run into any kind of dissuade, uh, problem.
Any additional questions for staff? Appears to be none. There's a motion on the floor, moved by Gearbar, seconded by Dylan to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve with conditions or not to approve?
Move to approve with conditions, stated.
All five, Mr. Seal?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gearbar. Any additional discussion? Mr. Seal?
Yes, I just wanted to address the gentleman's concerns about kind of, how the kind of business reflect on the community itself. And I guess I would just say that I agree with you and, and your sentiments exactly. However, I need to remind you, sir, and, and we're governed by the fact that the majority of the citizens in the state voted to legitimize this kind of a business. When we did a survey in contemplation of passing our local ordinance, the survey overwhelmingly reflected that the citizens were in favor of this kind of a business in our community. So even though individually we may or may not be in favor of that, we're still, I think, governed by the majority in a democratic society. And that's why I'm going to vote in favor of this, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Seal. Any additional discussion on the motion? Then we have a motion on the floor, moved by Seal, seconded by Gearbar, to approve the motion with the five enumerated conditions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 22-311, special land use for adult-use marijuana retailer at the same location. Again, we require two separate applications at 1080 East Michigan Ave. First would be a motion to open the public hearing, affording the public an opportunity to speak to this issue at 7:44. Moved by Gearbar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dylan. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this issue? Certainly.
After hearing what you said, I understand, that's our society. It's happening everywhere. I understand that. It's the location that I'm concerned about. It's Michigan Ave. It's Michigan Ave. 12 that they see. If they put it somewhere else, that's fine. That's fine. I have no problem with that. It's the location. The other thing is, as I stated before, is the proximity of the location, which is 900 feet from where hundreds of people reside. And that's another concern as well. The other concern is that the use of this land, 6.54 acres, the concern that I have is a greenhouse, coming back to you for a greenhouse, cultivation, growing it, then we got the smell, we got the odor. When you purchase a land for retail, and I'm hearing you saying that it's going to be back, well, the further back it is, the closer it is to us. And so that's a concern as to the use of this land. When they have 6.5 acres for a retail building, why do they need all that acreage? And so their mindset as a business person, if I were to buy that type of land, I'm going to be thinking expansion in the future. We're talking about storage, we're talking about cultivation, we're talking about greenhouses, and those are aspects that somewhere, that in the legal document, I think there should be a clause in there as to how they're going to use this land with their expansion in the future plans. So those are the concerns that I have, since I couldn't respond back to questions.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any additional citizen comments on this issue? Then a motion to close at 7:46.
So moved.
Moved by Gearbar, seconded by Seal. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now closed. The subsequent motion will be a motion to acknowledge the memo dated November 17th, 2022, from Recording Secretary Ritchie and to approve with conditions or not to approve the special land use at 1080 East Michigan Ave. for adult-use marijuana retailer with the following five conditions. It's your pleasure.
Mayor?
Uh, I'm sorry. Yes, who?
Sorry, we don't have a motion.
No.
Move to approve with condition.
You'll want, you'll acknowledge first, Mr. Seal?
Yes, Your Honor.
Acknowledge and then to approve with the five enumerated conditions. Very good. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Kamira Sulek. Again, in Recording Secretary Ritchie's absence, Mr. Harrington, would you care to comment? And you, can you confirm for Mr. Manuel that grow and cultivation operations are not permitted by ordinance in the city of Saline?
Yes. Okay, I can do a couple of things here. So it was very similar with the Planning Commission, it was the, pretty much an identical conversation. We do require the dual submittal, dual licenses, et cetera. So nothing's changed there. As for the regulations surrounding the land, because it's marijuana and because we're going through the special land use process, anything that would no longer be incidental, say like another dumpster container or something like that, would actually have to come back to this body to be heard upon again. They can't grow in the city, it's strictly forbidden in our zoning ordinance. So regardless of whether they own the property or not, the city, the city has the right to make land use regulations surrounding that. So I could give you a long soliloquy about police powers and how that all works, but essentially, we have the right to regulate the land heavily and approve no more than we've currently allowed with this specific proposal.
Very good. Anything else on this particular motion, Mr. Harrington?
No, it's very straightforward, I think.
Yes, it is. Questions from the dais? Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Seal?
Just the comment, Your Honor, that this, this approval is specifically for the sale at the site.
Retail, yes. Retail for adult use. Correct.
Revenue would not allow for storage or for cultivation or for processing or for delivery. You all, it depends on how we, we look at that specifically.
Just a retail space. Yep. Mr. Gearbar?
And just to clarify, that was the concern about having pickup and delivery. People were concerned that you'd have transactions going on outside and that type of thing. So that's the reason why we still discussed that issue and prevented it from having that type of service, so it stays within the building, not out in the parking lot.
Hence, condition number five.
Yep.
If there's no additional discussion, we do have a motion on the floor, moved by Seal, seconded by Kamira Sulek, to acknowledge and to approve with the five enumerated conditions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to unfinished business, item 22-299, special land use for adult-use marijuana retailer at 7608 East Michigan Ave. This is unfinished business, so let's start with a motion to simply acknowledge receipt. We'll hear, I believe, a presentation from, from the city attorney.
Move to acknowledge.
Move to acknowledge the memo dated November the 12th. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamira Sulek. Mr. Harrington, would you like to begin or would you like to defer to, to legal counsel?
Uh, I guess I can kick things off if, unless Tony has a specific preference, I can't see behind the TV there. We did have the opportunity to meet with a public commenter from the last meeting who expressed concern, or I guess they expressed concerns as an organization, not a person, over this potential location, including potentially private agreements that might infringe upon the dispensary's ability to locate. After working through that with the, the public commenter, it became clear to us that the issue is fundamentally a private one and should not impede or impact the decision of the city council. Unless, eventually, if the, the private agreement somehow infringed on the site plan or prevented access or prevented parking, et cetera, at the, at that point, we could then use our powers as a city to reinvestigate the matter. But since such an issue does not like, appear likely to exist, we can continue ahead.
Very good.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I think that's exactly right. So after the commenter did kind of come at the last minute, Colleen and Ben and I met with them and their inside counsel and outside counsel as quickly as possible. Again, they spoke to the potential for agreements and reciprocal easements that may exist, but they had no proof of it. To this day, they have not provided any, nor have we been able to locate any. And as, as Mr. Harrington pointed out, more importantly, I really think that when we're reviewing the SLU, we really need to, and I provided a memo, it was actually not on this exact issue, but back in, on November 4th, that references the standards that are located at section 9.05 basis for determinations. And we really need to look at those seven enumerated bases for a determination on an SLU and go based upon those, rather than this what appears to be an inherently private circumstance where the two bodies would both have authority to seek intervention by a court, but it's really not our role at this time, based on everything we've found.
Very good. And Mr. Harrington, for the public's edification, thank you, Tony.
Yep.
Can you confirm this petition also does not have final site plan approval?
No, that is correct.
Okay. And if my memory serves me correct, their original submittal, I'm not meaning to be pejorative, of course, was not as thorough as some other applicants. So I would suspect some time between now and when they submit for final.
That specific question, I guess?
Well, I expect some time before we, before the Planning Commission.
Oh, yes, there, yes, there will be, I, I would guess there's going to be a couple of months before they turn to us for, it's a new built property, which usually takes a little bit longer.
Correct. Very good. Questions for staff or legal counsel? No? Okay. Then we have a motion on the floor to acknowledge, it was been moved by Seal, seconded by Kamira Sulek. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a subsequent motion to approve with conditions, added conditions, or to not approve?
Move to approve with the four conditions stated.
Moved by Seal to approve with the four conditions enumerated on the agenda. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Kamira Sulek. Any additional discussion on the motion? Mr. Delarco, please.
I have some points I want to clarify.
Please.
At the time this came before this by last meeting, there was a, a lot of lack of clarity on a particular issue regarding how to interpret the special land use. And then there was additional red flags raised by Huntington Bank comment at the beginning of the meeting. I think most of those issues with Huntington Bank have been addressed. And having some time to read through the legal memo that was provided for this meeting, there does appear to be more clarity over a particular issue in the interpretation of the word harmonious in how we evaluate the criteria for, for special land use application. I will say from the point of view of, of the Code Review Committee, I, I was led to believe that we would have some discretion over how many of these facilities we would[1613.91] that we would have some discretion over how many of these facilities we would be able to allow into our community through use of zoning and special land use. And that was implied in lieu of placing a cap on how many of these facilities would be allowed. Because the argument was, through the legal staff that we had at the time, was that using a cap would open ourselves up to much more litigation than we would prefer. That there was a lot of areas around competition and that could get murky for us. And what I'm experiencing now as a council member is that in an attempt to use zoning and special land use as a way to buffer this out, that method is somehow failing us, even if we're uncomfortable, with taking a vacant piece of land to develop for this purpose when we have a number of vacant storefronts that could be better used in that regard. And then the argument was made, the building department, while we're investing in that property, we're improving the conditions, and we'll be able to better market that land whether this business fails or not. My concern as a council member has been that this is, small community is, this particular business is becoming oversaturated, and that a number of these businesses will succeed and a number of these businesses will fail. And I hate to see a building being created that's going to end up vacant over the course of weeding out which businesses succeed and which businesses fail. That all being said, the legal memo seems to provide no legal basis or justification by which we can deny this applicant granted this special land use based on our own ordinances and the legal statutes that exist. And I just want to make sure that you agree with that in your legal memo.
Sure. Well, and so I want to go back. So first of all, the trend of not using caps and not using scoring bases and using the zoning ordinance to limit is absolutely the correct way to go. I have litigation in way too many communities, and it virtually all is about points and other limitations. So your prior legal counsel is absolutely accurate, and the current case law absolutely shows that that, you know, that that was the right way to go. Now, the point of the memo was to address a very narrow question about the meaning of harmonious within the framework of section 905 sub 1. And so that note regarding harmonious relates to the general objectives or objectives of the master plan specifically. And so that was the only limitation that I was advising is that as it relates to applying harmonious to say that it's not harmonious with the nearby museum was not consistent with that subsection. But the reality is, these seven enumerated circumstances do give tremendous discretion. They just always need to be applied just, you know, consistent with the plain language of those seven exceptions. So I think it's defensible to make a determination based upon any of the seven, and it's generally, you know, that's generally deferred to by a court. That was just, I had a very specific question that was asked of me for purposes of this memo, so I hope that clarifies.
It does to me, and I feel like there's been some confusion over the word harmonious and how it's not, you know, a subjective interpretation, that it means something very clearly as it applies to the special land use as far as it being consistent with other businesses in that zoning, not whatever may be nearby. So there's some concern over the museum possibly falling under the definition of the school. And then one of the questions that I raised is, in your memo, you said if that museum is used for functions and events sponsored by a school, that may be, you know, considered definition for a school. So can anyone tell me whether or not we, the school sponsors activities at this museum?
That would be best addressed by Mr. Gearbo, who doubles as the president of the Storps Society.
We don't have a formal agreement with them. What they have done, but because of COVID, we had to prevent that from happening, is that they would bring their second grade classes out for a tour during the school year, usually either in the fall or in the May time period. And then each class would come out and participate as a just sort of review of the farm and so forth. But we would have multiple classes come out. We would have a former teacher provide them with an educational experience and expose them to, you know, the ideas of a 1930s farm.
So that is an area of grave for me at the current time. Based on your memo, the only legal basis that this council would have to deny this applicant special land use is what I highlighted in your memo, is used for functions and events sponsored by a school. So that seems to be unclear at this juncture. Other than that, I appreciate both sides of the argument, and I find myself in a difficult position.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Delarco. Any additional comments from the floor? Mr. Gearbo?
My opinion has not changed. I believe our museum is a location which we want to maintain as a, and I will say it, a safe and clear indicator that we don't have that concern related to potential, you know, trafficking of individuals onto the farm or hanging out there. I know this is an issue that everybody argues about, but as I said before, I want to see a change. And I think we, as a council, need to talk about it again to make sure Mr. Harrington has direction that facilities located within 500 feet of any public park, museum, or that item are not allowed, to make sure that this kind of clarification...
Let me stick on that point real quick, if I may, Mr. Gearbo, because I would hope there's no ambiguity on that, but you're right. I don't think we've developed specific consensus on that point. The position that Mr. Gearbo just articulated, is there any objection from the dais to having Mr. Harrington and his colleagues draft the necessary amendments to the ordinances to include that language? No? Okay. Or no objection from the dais?
I mean, the footage is up to you. We need to be consistent. So it's either 500 or 1,000 feet, or whatever it is, but...
Conceptually, there's agreement that that needs to be done, and for you to bring back a draft for us to consider and adopt in the not-too-distant future. Go ahead, Mr. Gearbo.
And I was just going to say, you know, as our earlier commenter had mentioned, new to you is a clarification. We have a significant number of children involved with the schools and participating in that. We have a school bus there dropping off students every single day. I know this issue would come up in another community, but I think this is a different situation where we've got two actual locations where we do have education aspects going on or have an involvement with the schools. So I am still going to vote no on this.
Mr. Seal?
Yes, Your Honor. How close is the Loom property that we've just approved to the Rensselaer farm?
It's at least 1,000 feet from here.
Is it?
Over why? Michigan Avenue?
It's past the, it's past where the...
Is it over by Farishamore?
Well, it's on the other side of Zippy's Car Wash. The farm is sort of parallel with the hotel.
Okay.
And Ace Hardware. And then you'd have the Zippy's to the west and then Loom to the west of that.
Farm borders this property. It doesn't border the Loom property.
Is it the parking lot?
Yeah, they're basically just a drive that separates...
No, there's that little...
Tractor supply. There's some grass space there, but it's all part of that complex.
Right next to, essentially attached to the tractor supply.
Generally, you park, when events happen at the farm, we park on that drive.
Any additional comments on the motion?
Just to clarify, from parcel line to parcel line, it appears that the Loom site is about 180 feet from the museum, but from parcel line to the actual entrance to the museum, it's closer to 1,000.
Very good. Then we have a motion on the floor moved by CO, seconded by Kamira Sulek, to approve with the four enumerated conditions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those say nay?
Nay.
Was that four? I have to make sure I have a majority here. Who is in favor of the motion? Raise your hand. Okay, four in favor and then two against. Motion passes. Thank you very much. We move on to new business item 22-323, audit report for 2022. This will be a motion to receive and file the 2022 audit report from Plant Moran as presented last, or two weeks ago.
Move to receive and file.
Moved by Gearbo to receive and file. Was that seconded by CO?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Treasure Cole is alone longer with us. City Manager O'Toole, any additional comments you care to make?
I believe she's available virtually through the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I am.
Hi, Treasure Cole. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, very good. Are there any additional comments you would like to make about the 2022 audit?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions for our city manager? Mr. Gearbo?
Just a statement. Thank you very much for your work. I know this was your first round with our auditors, and I appreciate you resolving all the management comments and not bringing any forward at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Seal?
Just to make the comment, my daughter in a previous life was an auditor, and I don't think many people appreciate the amount of work that goes into the people of the company being audited, in this case, the city being audited. So I commend you and your staff and all the city staff, Manager O'Toole, for the work that they put in to help this auditor get through this process.
Good. Thank you. If there's nothing further, there's a motion to receive and file that was moved by Gearbo, seconded by CO. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. I say have it. The motion carries unanimously. Next business item is 22-339, software and services for BSNA Cloud. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Treasurer Cole and to approve or not to approve the proposal from BSNA Software for upgraded BSNA Cloud software for an implementation cost not to exceed $27,000 for FY 2223, a cost of $41,680 for FY 2324, and $54,620 for FY 2425, and a recurring annual service fee of $38,595.
I move to acknowledge and to approve with an additional statement that we receive a quarterly update on terms of implementation.
That's seconded.
That's okay. That verbiage is appropriate, and that's seconded by CO. City Clerk, did you get that language?
As long as you receive a quarterly update on...
Implementation.
And then a quarterly update would be provided regarding implementation. Okay? Very good. Treasure Cole, you alluded to this during our work meeting this evening and I think previous to that. Any additional comments you'd like to make at this time?
I just would like to kind of go back to BSNA and currently let you know that it is our city's ERP system. We've been a partner with them for 20 years. They are a trusted partner. They really gained that trust through exceptional customer service, through specialization in government and municipal work that has kind of boded itself in helping us create some better ways of doing things. Through this process, they would work with us individually in our departments and help us evaluate our current processes and procedures to come up with some new ideas of doing things and to incorporate them into the new software and everything that it can do. I want to reiterate that it really does help us break down the silos that the modules kind of create for our departments right now. This would make us more robustly connected and give us the ability to see data live and changes that are happening in a live manner. Through this process, also, we'll have customized workflows built with approvals that will be developed with the department heads and the experts from BSNA. I just want to let you know that all the department heads have, like viewed a demo, excuse me, a demo of the product and unanimously are in support of moving forward with the project. One of the most exciting things is a work order system that we'll be able to have through BSNA that will be connected to all other applications. And I think the overall ability to kind of reduce the amount of applications that employees and staff are going to right now to provide services to our residents will be reduced in a great manner. Lastly, I want you to know that this project is really going to help build resilience of our ERP system, making it standalone so that, you know, in events like COVID, everyone is still able to work from home seamlessly. Heaven forbid other types of events that might happen. BSNA goes on regardless if we can open up city hall doors or not. I look forward to providing you a project plan with milestones and present those regularly to city council, whether it's quarterly basis or more, and looking forward to hopefully having a great team work to make this a success for the city.
Very good. Thank you, Treasure Cole. I also see that our IT administrator is on Zoom this evening. Mr. Shank, is there anything you'd like to add regarding this technology?
No, I think from a top-level perspective, Treasure Cole really nailed it. You know, our existing BSNA instance has been in place for nearly 13 years, so it's been a really solid product, you know, at every level of government, from local to county to state. BSNA is the partner that we all really rely on. So I think they've made it pretty clear as far as a current product portfolio, this, what we're doing, our existing systems are pretty much end of life in the sense of they're not going to add as many robust features. The cloud really is the way to go. They've really made that clear with the direction, although not official. I mean, you can tell with their feature sets. I think COVID really pushed that to accelerate the development of it. I think it's still in the early stages of it for some products, but they are actively and aggressively updating. So I think it's definitely the wave of the future. And to Treasure Cole's point, you know, some of the software packages we have existing, we will be eliminating to move to cloud because they supplemented products that maybe BSNA didn't have or really didn't have the feature set at the time that we wanted. So I'm excited to get going on it. It is going to be a major lift. I mean, from a technical perspective, I think I'm lucking on this one. They're going to have a lot more to get done and knock out, but, you know, we're excited to hit the ground running on this and get in line. It's not unheard of. A lot of local municipalities are either in line or actively exploring going to cloud and moving off-prem. So I'd like to get going, and I think we're all excited to get it going.
Very good. Seems like an obvious and very beneficial change that we as an organization need to make. City Manager O'Toole, anything you'd like to add?
No.
Very good. So we have the appropriate staff members either present or online this evening. What questions do you have? Mr. Gearbo?
Can you just clarify, do we have enough technical tools and devices to effectively roll this out in DPW? Because I believe work order is part of this.
Correct, yeah. So again, starting with the COVID pandemic, we've really evaluated our desktop hardware. So, you know, we're not really doing desktop machines anymore. We're doing laptops, and we've been giving them to pretty much every employee. If they don't have a laptop, they've got a device, a city-issued phone or tablet. Those are easy things, and we'll evaluate that throughout the process and see, you know, whatever hardware is needed for staff, we're absolutely going to, you know, we want to succeed. So this will, yeah, it'll all be a part of the evaluation and how we go forward with it.
Yeah, whatever we can do, because I don't want to have any concern through issues where we have a failure of implementation where it's associated with the lack of the proper tools or items like that. Because I think in the past, that might be concerns, but if we have the training and everything that I know you all will implement, that'll help make this a success. And from my perspective, if Treasure Cole, you would like to have somebody from council to participate or to have feedback from, I would be more than willing to be that individual as you put this in there, because I want to see this succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions in the dais? Councilmember Dylan?
Thank you. I apologize if it was asked earlier. I had to step away from the dais. So a couple of issues. Is moving to a cloud base, does that make us any more susceptible to malware issues and any threats? Or is it, does it go the other direction?
You know, it's a good question. More, I don't know. It probably depends on who you discuss it with. From my perspective, there's two ways to look at it. So we're a smaller target, having the on-prem box, you know, having the BSNA cloud, it's a bigger collective target potentially, but they're obviously taking steps to mitigate that. So for instance, two factors required for all accounts to access it. There's some geo kind of IP stuff. You can block logins from certain areas. So, yeah, is there a concern? Obviously, any service or device connected to an internet connection, there's a security concern. But like I said, these guys aren't new to this space. They understand the risks, and they're actively, you know, kind of evolving with what we've seen. Even since the initial cloud rollout, it seems like they've adapted and changed the processes to be more security-focused.
And sort of just tagging on to Mr. Gearbo's question about hardware, will there be training expenses also? I'm just looking kind of at the budgetary side of things, or do these dollar amounts include training for all staff?
Yes, the dollar amounts do include extensive training. In fact, that's the largest cost within the implementation fee.
Fantastic. So now, is this strictly a user portal or is there a resident-facing aspect to this? Like, is there a way that, because I know currently you can, residents can log into BSNA and we can see certain things about it. Will this give residents any more access or information, or is it really just for sort of, you know, back of the house?
While that step is down the line after implementation is completed, that is certainly something that they've built in to make the availability have transparency, more user-friendly. Of course, that will be a council decision, how transparent we want to make it, but absolutely that feature makes it much, much more accessible.
Okay. And then, Mr. Shank, I just want to make sure, now, what does this entail for you and your workload? How much of this will fall to you or are there other outside contractors? Does BSNA provide people that will do any of the installs and, you know, get this up and running?
Yeah, so it's going to be part of that. That's all rolled into the costing. So there'll be some of me. It'll be interesting to see how the project goes along, and I think obviously we can put those in those quarterly reports. I don't think, especially out of the gate, it's going to be a lot more lift on the Treasurers' Department. You know, when we get closer to launch, you know, testing devices, making sure we're going there. I don't foresee it adding a ton, but, you know, if that's something, you know, that happens, we can obviously reevaluate it. I mean, this is a huge project. This is probably one of the largest I've been involved with while here. I mean, it's reevaluating all our processes, all our technical, you know, know-how. And obviously, with BSNA doing this implementation throughout, you know, not only Washington County but the state, they're going to have a lot more, hey, here's best practice, here's a way to quickly kind of knock stuff out. So there will be a significant kind of reliance on them throughout a lot of it. So, and I think, you know, if the project becomes too much, BSNA is there with, you know, available services depending on, depending what the needs are.
Okay. Because that's what, I don't want it to stall because we don't have the manpower on our end to connect all the pieces together is my issue. And so I want to make sure that if we feel as though we need others, that we are just building that into the cost factor at this time.
Right, and I think that's in the proposal right now, and that's part of the whole entire process is we'll have BSNA staff on site to assist with a lot of the project.
Okay. And just...
Real quick, go ahead. Oh, sorry, in addition, Miss Dylan, so I probably contact BSNA about once a week. It's part of their larger service package, so what we pay them for. They're a very responsive team, probably far more responsive than most city staff even. If I send them an email, I get it back within a couple hours without fail. We all have, we're all busy, but it's more of just, they're very on it, they're very responsive. They'll call you back, they'll email you back with an immediate solution to a lot of your issues. So in that sense, they've been nothing but wonderful to deal with.
Okay. I appreciate it, because I, my questions just stem from the fact that we have done different things over the years. different things over the years. We've done different softwares that were supposed to help streamline processes, this and that, and there was always some sort of a hiccup in them, and whether people weren't trained, whether we didn't have the right software, the right hardware, whatever the case may be, they just sort of set stagnant, and we weren't really utilizing them to their full potential by any means. And so I want to make sure that, I definitely think this is the right direction for the city, so making sure that we have all those pieces right from the start is really important to me.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Delarco, did you have any questions?
My questions were asked by Jay.
Okay, very good. Additional questions from the dais? Appears to be none. Thank you, it's Treasurer Cole. Thank you, IT Administrator Shank. Any additional discussion on the motion? Mr. Girbaugh?
Just an earlier statement that I made. You know, it's hard to adapt to change and making it occur, and my hope is that, you know, we will move forward. We are trying to be a forward-moving organization, but the action of this and making this successful comes down to expectation from staff, our directors and our leaders, but also from our employees. And my expectation is that this will be part of the performance and review aspect of how fast this is adapted and implemented. And this is my challenge to the city manager, who I think is up to it and will make this happen. Thank you.
Very good. If there's nothing further, we do have a motion on the floor moved by Girbaugh, seconded by CO, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. As have, the motion carries unanimously. Last business item is 22-340 sewer credits. This will be motion to acknowledge, received the memo from City Manager O'Toole, and authorize, not authorize, the city manager to apply for a second meter sewer credit to the fall of 2022 billing period for qualifying residents.
Move to acknowledge?
It's just been moved by, acknowledged by Dylan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Girbaugh. City Manager O'Toole, do you care to comment?
Certainly. So as you recall, council previously approved an authorization from my office to grant sewer credits for individuals that were not able to access the secondary irrigation meters. Some of those individuals had installations that occurred after the end of the summer billing period, and it rolled over into the fall billing period. The specific language of that motion was limited to the summer billing period, so we are asking councils to consider just allowing an authorization for the fall billing period as well for those that were impacted by that.
Very good. Questions for the city manager? Ms. Dylan?
So my only question was, I would feel comfortable if I had more information, if I had the number of credits, the amount of the credits. It just seems very open-ended at this point, and so I'm very uncomfortable with just giving carte blanche as to, yeah, we approve it without having any basis to it. Is there any detail that you can provide?
Treasurer Cole, are you still available to answer that question?
Yes, I am. Right now, the total adjustments we just distributed, I think in our monthly report, this last report that listed all of the adjustments, the large adjustment was just under $80,000, and then there have been individual adjustments that have happened along the way. So I would imagine that we might see a residual amount coming through because of the weather lasted through the fall was quite warm, so some of those adjustments may need to be extended, except, especially for the sprinkler meter situations. So in those cases, I would imagine that they wouldn't exceed more than $10,000 in total.
So to date, we have done more than $80,000 in credits?
Yes.
Well, the $80,000 in credit, if you recall, is for the billing adjustment, because we billed at the full rate.
Right.
So, correct, Treasurer Cole, that's what you're referencing with the $80,000, is correcting the bills that were at this year's rates, where they should have been partially at the prior year's rates.
Correct.
And do you know how many there are that are still impacted that would total to the $10,000?
I would say probably roughly 10 to 20. But again, the portion of the bill would just be for really that fall usage that was still pretty warm, so we're talking very small dollar amounts.
And at what point would you have exact numbers? I mean, I'd like to just close out this issue at some point, so we don't keep going on and on. So, I mean, is there a cutoff as to when people can submit for these, or are you just proactively providing credits?
We're not proactively providing credits right now at this point. I would imagine that after the bills are sent out, really still, probably another six weeks after the bills are sent out, so that would be, you know, roughly mid-March.
Okay. That before we get a final tally as to the amounts?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm just, there was, these are people that weren't able to get a meter in time? There was that? I thought there was like three or four.
Yes, unfortunately, due to supply chain issues, the meters were not available during the summer for many of our residents that had new homes and wanted to install the second meters. So for that reason, they were given an adjustment, and there are a handful of them that I would imagine will be seeking the same type of credit for that fall usage that was really like summer weather.
Okay.
So there did end up being more because of new homes that were not able to access the second meter systems.
Okay. But at that point, they would have known that the new rate was in effect?
Not necessarily, depending on when they purchased, if they purchased their home. These are all individuals, correct me if I'm wrong, Treasurer Cole, who would have purchased their home or finished construction on their home during the summer billing period.
Correct.
These people are on a waitlist that we already knew and weren't available to give them a meter?
There was a waitlist, and there was also all new construction was not able to access the meters.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Mr. Girbaugh?
Just, I'm sorry for interrupting Councilmember Dylan. Just to ask on that one, so these new constructions, we've confirmed that they actually are putting in a meter before we give them a credit, so I just want to seal that whole thing. Did we resolve all the other issues and concerns that were arising, not just the irrigation aspects, where there were concerns about meters being installed backwards or any of those? Has all that been resolved?
Yes, to my knowledge, we've resolved all open issues. I don't think we identified any meters that were actually installed backwards.
I just want to, and I agree with Councilmember Dylan, we should have, at some point, there should be a drop-in date, so if you can establish some line in terms of that, that we will no longer consider any additional credits.
Would, based on the timeline you outlined, Treasurer Cole, would March 15th be reasonable?
Yes.
Just include that. There's only, excuse me, there's just a motion to acknowledge receipt, so when we entertain the subsequent motion, we could add some additional language, providing a cutoff if that's the consensus of council. Thank you, Treasurer Cole. If there's nothing further, we do have a motion on the floor moved by Girbaugh, seconded by, moved by Dylan, seconded by Girbaugh, to acknowledge receipt of the memo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. As have, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to authorize, not authorize, or a, excuse me, or to do either with some amended language?
Move to authorize with a cutoff date of March 15th?
I would second that.
I'm assuming you meant March 15th of 2023.
Correct.
I didn't ask that.
Yeah, that's helpful.
So that's been moved by Girbaugh, seconded, was that CO?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. So Clerk Royal for the public's benefit and for council, will you read back the motion?
To authorize the city manager to apply the second meter sewer, apply second meter sewer credits to the fall 2022 billing period for qualifying residents through March 15, 2023.
Very good. Any additional discussion on the motion? Mr. Girbaugh?
Are we all right with putting in meters now? We have sufficient meters, whatever demand is, we're all set.
Yes, yeah, we're actually at the phase in the project where we're going to be sending out notices to those who haven't yet scheduled and giving them to January 31st in order to try and come into compliance.
And that includes irrigation meters, I guess I should clarify.
Yes, we have, we have sufficient meters for irrigation.
Thank you.
If there's nothing further, there's a motion on the floor moved by Girbaugh, seconded by CO, to authorize. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. As have, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is Commission Committee and Task Force reports from council. Again, I'll begin to my right and end to my left. Mr. Mayor Sulek, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Celine Youth Council met last Tuesday and went over the event calendar for next year and different volunteer opportunities, some of which are senior citizen cleanup, restocking, re-rotating the little, the books for the little libraries throughout the city. And we had a presentation about the little art, the little art libraries. So the Arts and Culture Committee is putting, will be putting in the first one in Celine and hoping that there'll be more of them. And secondly, the DEI Committee met last Wednesday, and there is going to be, there's a monthly book and/or film discussion. And tomorrow at 7:00 at the Liberty School, the boardroom, will be a film discussion on the feeling of being watched, which sounds kind of ominous. So the idea is to watch this ahead of time and then, and then just discuss it at the, at that time, 7:00 at the Liberty School Boardroom. And with that, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember CO, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
Mr. Honner, the Parks Commission met last week on Tuesday night. We had a fairly lighthearted meeting. It was the final meeting for Mr. Scott.
Spooner?
Spooner, thank you. Yes, and so at the adjournment, we went to one of the local establishments and had some adult beverages. Apparently, like I say, it was a lighthearted meeting and had some good fellowship.
Very good. Councilmember Dylan, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
Not since our last meeting.
Very good. Mr. Girbaugh, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
Yeah, a couple. Risk management, as you know, we continue to do our updates and reviewing. We're now in a process of reviewing all of our new staff. Surprisingly, the last time when we did our interview of all the staff and members in just two years, we pretty much have changed over in every situation. So we're reviewing our, every department and our new staff that we've hired in the last six months to get their viewpoints and maybe new ideas that we may have missed, and looking forward to doing that. We just completed a review with our treasurer, I take that back, our DPW director, and we're looking forward to meeting with the Chief of Police, Mr. Harrington, and we're getting there, and hopefully there'll be City Engineer, thank you. City Engineer, we had already met with her, and then we met with Mr. Briggs. That's amazing, you know, getting the new perspectives, and I believe this has helped our city immensely in trying to understand our problems and things that are going forward. Luckily, this last planning commission, we actually dealt with items that were not marijuana shops. Tractor Supply is expanding, and we approved that site plan review. Mission Elite is going to be taking over what used to be the former Snap Fitness and what was the other name, Target?
Yeah.
It's in, in the Stock Trail Shopping Center next to Imagine Theater. The name of its Mission Elite, so they're going to be, they went through a site plan review too, because that had been closed for a year. And then lastly, Farmer Development, as Mr. Harrington had mentioned earlier, is going to be remodeling that entire facility in terms of expanding its indoor storage. And we came up with one concern, there is a business in there that we're not so sure has gone through the proper reviews, which is a massage clinic, so that's being investigated by Mr. Harrington, to come back to planning for clarification.
I do have an update on that, too.
Please.
So the tenant is actually a tenant of Simply Storage themselves, so they're not operating out of a storage facility, but within Simply Storage, there's their own units that are separate from the units that are for the building. Very, like, it's like condoed within a condo. It's still all owned by the same people, I believe. Nevertheless, I have been in touch with Simply Storage's manager about the concerns we have over zoning, the lack of licensing with the city, and the lack of billing inspections. I will likely be hearing from them later this week to follow up the next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. And then one thing with that is we understand that the Bill Napp sign will be coming down.
Thank you. Mr. Delarco, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
Yes. The Code Review Committee met last week and had a substantive discussion around council's request for some clarification on the role of this body and its functions. And just for sake of brevity, I'm going to read from the minutes a summary of our discussion. There's no support for meeting more regularly. The Code Review Committee reviews ordinances, they don't write them without instruction. It is not clear to the Code Review Committee that they should even be writing ordinances. If they are asked to construct new ordinances, they ask for the council to necessarily expect delays. In addition, the Code Review Committee would like clear direction on what is expected of their role when asked to create new ordinances. There is an interest in establishing formal criteria for how an ordinance or request to create an ordinance is sent to the Code Review Committee. The Code Review Committee would like to make it clear that they're proposing a means to accomplish a goal that is the council sets. They are not advancing for or against the merits of the goal itself. So I can state from my personal view that since I was elected to office and appointed to the Code Review in 2020, there has been several new ordinances created through the Code Review Committee with the assistance of consultants and attorneys, namely the marijuana, marijuana, medical and rec ordinance, the rental inspection ordinance, the responsible contractor's ordinance, and now currently accessory dwelling units. It occurs to me that the Code Review Committee is functioning not so much as a review body, but a place in which ordinances are being created, and that's probably not the appropriate role for the Code Review Committee. So instead of focusing on putting the onus on the Code Review Committee to report back to council on what our role is to you, the council needs to provide clear indication as to what this body should be performing for the council. Because in my mind, the genesis for the body was to work with the council as a team to facilitate reviewing ordinances. The notion that meeting more frequently will result in quicker turnaround or under recommendation is a fallacy. I can tell you a number of times, anytime a new code review, a new code has come to the body, it isn't for a lack of diligence and meeting and attendance that these things get delayed. It's because we're waiting on opinions from attorneys, we're waiting on drafts. I can give you a perfect example with the accessory dwelling unit. We've met consecutively for two months, and Carolina Wardman has not been prepared with a draft for us to consider. So that's where we stand. I know the Chair of the Code Review Committee is here with us tonight, and perhaps she has some comments as well.
Not obligated, Ms. Tahar, but if you care to make any comments, you're welcome.
Thank you, Lynda Tahar, 108 East Henry Street. Yes, Mr. Delarco has summed, and Mr. Harrington with the minutes has summed up quite, quite well the tenor of our discussion. And I think at the core of it, the question is, is this a review committee, or is this a creation committee? A creation committee, I think, is not our role, and because creation has to do with policy and setting policy, and that's council's job. So, you know, I think we probably, I thank council for raising these questions, because we hadn't really paused to think about this before, about what we've been asked to do in the last two to two and a half years, which I believe we need at a very minimum more guidance and more hands-on from council about exactly what, what goals need to be fulfilled. That's not our job. An example, perhaps, you know, we'll go back to marijuana. When we started the discussion of the medical marijuana ordinance some time ago, we spent perhaps, I don't know, might have been an entire meeting talking about, so what are we doing here? Are we telling the council we think this is a good idea, or are we simply writing an ordinance because council wants it? And we, our conclusion was, but it took some time to get there, was, it was not our job to say that this was a good idea or not, and some of us didn't think it was. But that was not our task. So in that, in that respect, council had given us guidance, but there was not, the only guidance was come up with an ordinance. That's not enough. Just one person's opinion.
No, I think that's good, and I think perhaps, you know, we have our strategic planning sessions coming up at the beginning of January, and I think this is an issue that we can do a deeper dive on. I think generally, your approach or your recommendation is correct, that it is the Code Review Committee. Review is implicit in the name of the group, and therefore, I think we as a council, as a city more broadly, can establish the necessary protocols and policies whereby we make recommendations of policies we want to see enacted to staff and legal counsel who draft the necessary ordinances and then provide them to Code Review for your input and for you to sort of pick apart to make sure that they're drafted correctly. So if you want to make a brief comment, you may, but we will certainly revisit this in January.
Absolutely. It has to do with Carlisle Wardman and the stalling on the accessory dwelling unit, or why it's taken so long. In addition to writing the rental inspection ordinance, they're also updating our site plan standards, in addition doing site plan reviews for
plan standards, in addition, doing site plan reviews for the city in an ordinance like the ADU one, which is, you know, created from scratch. It takes some time to write, takes some time to get second opinions on, which is why it's taken a while. So, I'd just like to know that process of creating a new ordinance necessarily does take time, so it's just a matter of getting through that. But that's no fault of Code Review, it's not really a fault of Carlisle Wardman or staff itself, it really just does take time.
Thank you. Mr. Del Orco, any additional comment you want to make on this issue or do you have any other commission committee or task force reports?
No, I just want to make it clear that the spirit of the Code Review Committee is to work with this body to facilitate the process of accomplishing its goals and it should not be an adversarial one.
Definitely. Agreed. No disagreement there. I just have one announcement as it pertains to this particular discussion item. I believe the city clerk emailed everyone on council last week regarding vacancies on boards and commissions. If you could do your part to promote the various groups that we have vacancies on or anticipate having vacancies on, those include our economic development boards, local officer compensation committee, parks, ZBA, and arts and culture for sure, and there may be others. But we are looking for good, interested, passionate residents to apply. You can find our application online, I think it's under the government, or under boards and commissions. Fill out the application, get it back to the clerk's office. We do a perfunctory background check, review your application, but our goal would be to have as many of these vacancies filled by the time we reconvene again on January 9th to consider 2023 board and commission appointments. So, if you're passionate about the community, I would encourage you to apply. Mr. Mayor Sulek, any other reports or announcements?
Yeah, I just want to step back for a second to the Code Review. Just for clarification, if I'm understanding this correctly, it sounds more like a process but also a communication improvement that's needed as far as the, what is being asked and the different pieces that are, that are needed. And I'm hoping that we weren't wasting people's time with, you know, with the delays of Carlisle Wardman, and not to cast aspersions or anything, but just so that we're all, you know, functioning efficiently and able to review codes. Would that, would that be? Correct? I don't know if that would be more for you, Ben, or Jim.
I still have no shortage of things to bring them at any given meeting. So, we've still met regardless of the ADU on a variety of other issues which will be coming to council in the month of January.
Okay. All right. Very good. Mr. CO, any reports or announcements?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. On Sunday, July, or January the 8th, first, or the second Sunday of the new year, right here in city council chambers, we're going to be having the two annual Sister City meetings for the Celine Lindenberg Sister City Committee and the Celine Brecken Sister City Committee. One will follow the other. The Celine Lindenberg meeting will be first at 1:00 PM, the Celine Brecken will follow at 3:00 PM. Anybody and everybody who's interested is encouraged to come and attend. I know in the Celine Lindenberg group, we're going to be talking about the visit next year that we are going to be making to the city of Lindenberg, Germany. And there'll be a lot of details there, and we encourage people to be here to hear what is to come. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Dillon, any reports or announcements?
Not at this time.
Mr. Gearbaugh?
I just want to thank the community for their support, showing up for Christmas at the Rentschler Farm. We had a great event, well over 110, 115 people were actually signed in. Our members, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus, Ron Koenig, Alicia Barnes, thankful to KBK for their donation of the Christmas tree this year. And then also, thanks to DPW and Reams for solving our heating problem, which got down to the wire, and they managed to get a new furnace in and kept us warm while we celebrated the season. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Del Orco, any reports or announcements?
I have none.
Then we come to public comments under the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required. State his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? Please, you'll have three minutes.
I'm the only one coming up. Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to, if possible, and I don't know if I can maybe get together then, but just some clarification of some ambiguity that I hear is that to establish the amount of distances, is it 500 feet or 1,000 feet, that the dispensary should not be close to a school? I'd like to get some clarification of that. I'd also like to get some clarification of the museum being right across the street is 180 feet. And then the other school, this Champion Driving School that I mentioned, is about four or 500 feet. I'd just like to get some clarification of that. Trying to find a way, if I could, to meet the criteria of whether or not that facility should be located there. Lume is, now that I've just learned, is a big operation. They have enough revenue, they can go anywhere they want. And so, anyway, that's something I would just like to follow up with.
I think Mr. Manuel, I gave you, Ben, Mr. Harrington's card, excuse me, when we met a week or so ago, I think he'd welcome an email or phone call.
Yes.
Be happy to be with you.
Very good.
Thank you, my friend. Appreciate you being here tonight. Mr., oh, two more. You go first, Ben.
Thank you for allowing me to speak again. I'm very disappointed in the vote tonight with the marijuana dispensary near Rentschler Farm. It's obvious that some people here care about kids, some of you don't. There are kids that are working at Rentschler Farm, that go attend to Rentschler Farm, and there's kids that work in UU again. It's a special needs worksite. You have failed kids when you passed this. Okay, I understand it's not school property, but kids go there. That's a conflict of interest. You swore to protect everybody in this community when you took an oath in office, and tonight you failed me, you failed my kids, because my kids attend that farm. And I will have a son that has the potential to work at UU again when he gets to high school. Think about that. You had an easy vote to make tonight. Last time it was 3-3. Tonight, it should have been 6-0.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Please.
Hi, Nicole Rice, North Ann Arbor Historic District. Perhaps my last comment for a while is a citizen. It's exciting. So, as a citizen, I would like to, this was potentially Councilmember Kraus's last meeting, and I would like to thank Councilmember Kraus for her years of service to the city of Celine. Ms. Kraus played an integral role in establishing the healthcare task force, which is working diligently to assess and hopefully establish new healthcare services in Celine, which we talked a lot about earlier today. Ms. Kraus was an outstanding citizen, working with and for those who need a little extra help. In 2020, I, Dawn and I worked together to establish an ad hoc group of citizens who helped other citizens during the holidays. We met through a Facebook group. And through this group, we adopted more than a dozen families who needed some extra help through the holidays. We raised money and that money was allocated to help folks with tasks like fixing their furnaces, lawn mowing, running errands, and all other kinds of acts of kindness. Dawn has obviously moved on from our city, but proudly knowing that her work was well-received and much appreciated. Dawn and her family lost a dear loved one yesterday, and I would personally like to send my condolences to them. And I would like to wish well in her future endeavors, and we really appreciate Dawn and we will miss her. Thanks.
Very nice. That was very, very gracious of you, Nicole. I actually recall doing something very similar in the waning weeks of 2008 when my predecessor, Kathy Roth, was getting off council to thank her for her tremendous service to this community and wish her well in her future endeavors. First, we are keeping Dawn and all of her loved ones in our thoughts and prayers in light of her stepfather, Bill's passing on Saturday. Additionally, we greatly appreciate her service to the city of Celine these past two years as a council member. As is our custom, we have this very nice plaque for her, which we'll be presenting to her in the near future. I will read it in its entirety because it's rather short. So, it says, "The city of Celine, Dawn Kraus." Whereas Dawn Kraus has served the city of Celine as a council member from January 2021 through December 2022. And whereas during the past two years, Dawn Kraus has served the city as a member of or a delegate to the following: Celine City Council, Celine Healthcare Improvement Task Force, Historic District Commission, Arts and Culture Committee, and River, Raisin, Watershed Council. And whereas Dawn's passion and commitment to the city has helped make Celine a strong and more vibrant community, now therefore be it resolved that the Celine City Council on behalf of the citizens of Celine, you hereby thank Dawn Council for, Dawn Kraus, excuse me, for her many contributions to the welfare of our community with sincere best wishes for continued success in all of her future endeavors, and it's presented to her on December 19th, 2022. Indeed, we wish her, we wish her well and hope to see her soon. Is there any other business to come before Celine City Council this evening? Please note our upcoming meetings, there's a typo on the agendas, we will be meeting again on January 9th, 2023, not 2022. Unless there's anything further to be brought up this evening, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:47.
So, moved?
Moved by Gearbaugh, is there a second? Seconded by Del Orco. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have it. Meeting is adjourned.